Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular board meeting. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Here. Here.
Ms. Kolevitz.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Paulson.
Here.
Mr. Hanlon and Deppson, his referee.
Here. Uh, Mr. Long, will you lead us in the pledge?
I would like to pledge the United States of America into the republic of justice. Our nation, our God, our citizens, our liberty, and justice.
Thank you. Okay, I need an approval to open the public hearing for the truth in taxation law.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booten.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Kolevitz. Um, Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Ms. Booten?
Yes.
Ms. Kolevitz?
Yes.
Ms. Blatter?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Crabtree?
Yes. Um, we do not have anybody signed up for the public hearing, so I need an approval to close the public hearing for the truth in taxation law.
So moved.
Okay, who was that? Mr. Mrs. Mrs. Booten, second, Mr. Paulson?
Sure.
Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call that roll?
Ms. Booten?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Blatter?
Yes.
Ms. Kolevitz?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Crabtree?
Yes. Okay, communication with our whole school. Um, Dr. Edwards, you are up.
Well, welcome to Johnson Elementary School, and thank you for allowing us to host a District Two Hundred school board meeting tonight. We are honored and humbled that you're conducting your meeting at our school. You know, being a school board member can sometimes be hard and difficult. There are a plethora of decisions that are required to be made that will have an indelible impact on the look on student learning and achievement. What an incredible responsibility. As a school board member, you set the standard for achievement in the school district, incorporating the community's view of what students should know and be able to accomplish at each grade level. You represent the community's voice in public education, providing citizen governance and knowledge of the community's resources and needs. And as a school board member, you are the policymaker closest to the student. And to you, education is not a line item in the school board budget. It is the only item. Well, tonight, we want to let you know that we are thankful for all that you do and will continue to do for our students. Tonight, we ask our students to speak to you from the bottom of their hearts and tell you thank you. Because oftentimes, you never hear or know how the students you have helped over the years feel. Well, tonight you will.
Boys and girls? First six, come on up, guys. All, all you guys.
I would like to take this opportunity to express my gratitude to one of the hardest-working groups of volunteers in the community. The Wheaton Warrenville School District Board of Education is elected by the community to represent, represent the people of the community in the oversight and direction setting of the schools. Board members contribute hundreds and hundreds of hours every year in leading their districts, whether crafting policies, hiring top-notch administrators, listening to staff and student concerns, or recognizing outstanding programs. Board members always keep their eyes on the prize of student achievement. We are blessed to have such a dedicated group of individuals who voluntarily give a minimum of four hours each month to fulfill their roles. Chris Crabtree, Rob Hanlon, Dave Long, Angela Blatter, Susan Booten, Julie Kulvitz, and Brad Paulson. We say thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
School boards are charged with making decisions that can sometimes be quite difficult or require shifting through a great deal of information. They contribute hundreds of hours each year leading Wheaton Warrenville Public Schools. Collectively, school board members spend hours on professional development to keep well-informed of the latest trends in educational leadership, are deeply involved in community activities, and spend many hours at extracurricular events. They spend hours developing ways to support each school in the district. And while we have always felt the support of the school board and the school district as a whole, these last three years have been very special, and we want to say thank you.
We do not usually think of school board members as school volunteers, but they do, in fact, volunteer to serve. School board members get, give their time, energy, and counsel to the district without pay. They take on the job of governing the district, making the best decisions they can for our children with the full understanding that they will receive only the satisfaction of their contribution. We honor you and are thankful for the hard and critical decisions you have made and will continue to make. One such critical decision you made, however, has not only benefited Johnson, but the community as a whole. The state of the R LED digital sign that is in front of Johnson Elementary is amazing. We are more than blessed to have received it. We know that the school board, along with the Johnson PTA and a private donor, is the reason why we have that sign. We are grateful that the school board invested fifty percent of the cost to purchase that sign, and for that, we say thank you.
The men and women on the school board who make the time to generously provide this important public service do so because they care. Their loving, no, their love of learning and concern and caring for students, staff, and the community. Drive board members desire to lead so students can achieve. They care about their own children's education. They care about the schools being the best they can be. They care about the next generation and the future of the community. They care about the mental and social and emotional growth of our students, and how students play is a big part of that growth. To that end, the district has launched an initiative to rebuild the playgrounds in District Two Hundred. We are humble and proud to say that Johnson was one of two schools chosen to receive this gift. First, and for that, we say thank you.
Public education is more than just the opportunity to learn basic math, science, English, and history. It's a platform for students to reach their potential. It can inspire hope for a new generation of leaders and provide a foundation for a successful future. Their contribution should not be understated. The volunteer efforts of the school board members have the potential for tremendous benefit to the community as a whole, as well as the lives of students individually. By serving the district in this important governance role, school board members lay the foundation of the future.
The school board makes difficult decisions for the enrollment of our students. Members vote on multimillion-dollar budgets, hire staff select textbooks, and review bus schedules and curriculum, to name just a few of the decisions they make for the district. Through dedicated responsible endeavors, school board members serve the public interest in public education and serve the needs of our kids. They ensure that decisions about public schools are made as close to the needs of our communities as possible.
With that being said, the students and parents at Johnson Elementary are beyond humbled by what the district plans to do to our library this summer.
The com- the complete overall of and remodeling of our LLC will turn our library learning center into a state-of-the-art twenty-first, tw- century library learning space where our students and staff can take learning to the next level.
We promise that space will be used to its full potential and will never be empty. We promise to innovate that space every year. We plan to honor your belief in our students, and for that, we say thank you.
So that's the first portion of our presentation with our students saying thank you to the board for all you guys have done. I would like each student to give their name and tell what grade you're in, introduce yourself.
I'm Sheranya, and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Kayshen, and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm David, and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Tashay, and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Zoe, and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Etzel, and I'm in fifth grade.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn it over to the next part of the presentation to Emily Vargis and Jenny Cromie, and they have another group of students here to do something for you guys as well.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. I have got a lovely group of students here, and we have started something new at Johnson this year called Wellness Wednesdays. We know it's important not only for staff to take care of themselves, but also for students. So every Wednesday, Mrs. Cromie, our social worker, along with Mrs. Wolbecker, our social work intern, go into the lunchroom, and it's an opportunity for students to practice SEL problem-solving skills. Is it a big problem? Is it a small problem? If we're angry or mad, what can we do? They also practice breathing strategies and coping strategies and ways to problem-solve and persevere when things get tough. So tonight, we have something a little different, we'll say, and I'm going to turn it over to our students.
Good evening. Tonight, we are going to lead you through some breathing exercises. We have practiced these breathing exercises this year. We would like you to please join us in these exercises.
If you could please stand up and place your hands on your belly. What we need to do, need to do is take a deep breath in and hold it for a few seconds and then breathe out.
We are going to do this two times. Breathe in. Breathe out. Breathe in. Breathe out. And when we are done, you can sit back down. You can sit down.
We have one more exercise for you tonight called five-finger breathing, and I will pass out a sheet for you to follow along with.
First, we have to hold out our hand and put one finger on our wrist. Breathe in as you push your finger up to the top of your thumb. Breathe in. Breathe out. Move to your next finger. Breathe in. Breathe out. Go to the next finger. Breathe in. Breathe out. Next finger. Breathe in. Breathe out. Your pinky finger. Breathe in. Breathe out. We are, we are going to do it one more time. Breathe in. Breathe out. Breathe in. Breathe out. Breathe in. Breathe out. Breathe in. Breathe out. Last one. Breathe in. Breathe out.
Right now, I'm also going to have the students share some times that they can use these strategies or have used these strategies. Do you want to share? Go ahead, just say, when's the time that you've used this breathing strategy?
When I'm mad.
Wyatt, go ahead, when's the time you can use this strategy?
When you're scared. When somebody's being mad at you.
Anyone else would like to share a time they can use it? Taishan, come on over, and then Lily.
When people don't want to play with you.
When you're a bit stressed out.
When you're sad.
So as you can see, our students have learned a lot of different ways to use our breathing strategies, but they have just one more question for you.
How do you feel after trying these breathing exercises?
Perfect, thank you. I'm going to have our students quickly just share their name and grade level as well.
I'm Antonia, and I'm in first grade.
I'm Coral, and I'm in second grade.
I'm Adriana, and I'm in third grade.
I'm Etzel, and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Sasha, and I'm in second grade.
I'm Clara, and I'm in third grade.
I'm Lily, and I'm in third grade.
I am Wyatt, and I am first grade.
Thank you. That concludes our portion.
Thank you, and that does end our part of this presentation. We appreciate you guys coming and enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you so much, Johnson students and families that are here also for this wonderful welcome tonight. Okay, um, next thing on our agenda is the modifications to the agenda. Does anybody have any modifications? Okay, on to recognitions and achievements. Mr. Chris Koontz, Wheaton Warrenville South High School boys and girls cross-country and track and field coach. Illinois Track and Cross Country Coach of Association Hall of Fame, class of two thousand and twenty-three induction.
Yeah, I'm going to bring Mr. Koontz up to the podium if you wouldn't mind, Chris. I know, uh, i- if, if there's one thing that I can tell you certainly about Chris as we honor and recognize his achievement tonight, as this is probably the last place that he wants to be standing, is, uh, at a podium i- in front of you. But, uh, Chris was honored this year by the Illinois Track Cross Country Coaches Association as he was inducted into their Hall of Fame. Um, it's an honor they give out every year to several of their coaches. Um, there's, uh, there's, there's clear criteria for the award, but, uh, what I can tell you is all you have to do is spend, uh, really about five minutes around Chris at any of his practices or meets, and you're going to see why, um, he was honored, uh, with that this year. Certainly, he's had tremendous success, uh, in his programs. I had the great pleasure of, uh, watching, uh, his boys win a state championship, uh, down in Peoria, absolute, uh, highlight. But again, even, even more than that, a little bit earlier this year, uh, I had a chance to, to visit with Chris at a, at a couple of, of their meets. Just watching him interact, uh, with his kids, with his athletes, uh, you, you see what, uh, he's really all about as a coach. So, uh, it's fitting that we can do this recognition here because, uh, Chris also spent an awful lot of time as a teacher here at Johnson, so he's, uh, he's back home, uh, tonight, but we also honor him, uh, with this recognition as a Hall of Fame inductee. Um, yes, uh, thank you, Dr. Schuler. I got to tell you, standing in the, I stood here for three, thirty-three years. I feel like I should have all you guys doing exercises. We'll all do exercises. Uh, Dr. Schuler, thank you. Um, you know, um, it's, it's been great. Again, I'm just a cog. I'm just a spoke in the wheel, and it's, it's made up of all the, all the different parts. I've just been really, really lucky to have some great people that surround me, other coaches, great athletes, great parents, great administrators, the entire Wheaton Warrenville, um, community. It's, it's, it's been awesome, and I, I thank you guys for your support. I thank everybody for their support, parents, everybody. Um, it's, it's, it's been fun and it's an honor. Thank you, thank you for the recognition. Thank you. Chris, we'd love to have you come up and shake hands with, uh, each board member so we can honor you.
Uh, next on the agenda is the president's report. I just have a short, a few things to, um, mention. Um, several of the board members had the opportunity to go to the, um, Illinois State School Board Association Conference, uh, Triple I Conference shortly before, um, Thanksgiving. Um, I had asked each board member if you could just, a few sentences, if you attended, um, about one of the, um, opportunities that you got to see. Um, while I was there, um, I had an opportunity to see several things as well as talk to people. Probably the biggest common theme that I heard was students' social emotional health. Um, we, as a district, had, uh, two presentations. Um, Dr. Schuler and Mrs. Laacino, uh, were on a panel, um, in regards to crisis communication, um, in the morning. But I think all the board members that were present had the opportunity to see Dr. Salagi, uh, Tracy Burnham, and Kelly Langsworthy, uh, do a presentation. I want to thank them for coming down on a Saturday before Thanksgiving, um, to really share something that our school is, district is doing that's really making an impact on students' emotional health. Um, I'm going to ask Dr. Salagi at a future board meeting, um, to please share some of the highlights of that meeting. I did have, um, a board president that I know reach out to me afterwards to say that was the most impactful conference they attended there with your presentation. And, um, but to hear about our, um, the work that's being done to help students that are in crisis, help families that are in crisis, and, and organize services on behalf of our staff for those students. Um, it was amazing and powerful to hear, and so I think, uh, we'd like to hear that as a, the community, I think, deserves to hear that. So, um, we'd like, maybe if you could bring your team back at some future, future board meeting. Uh, second thing I just want to talk about is I had, uh, Johnson is, um, one of my adopted schools this year, and I had the ability to be here on Friday. Um, I thought I saw her, but she probably walked out with the group. Uh, Mrs. Ms. Back, I was in her third-grade classroom, actually. Um, Clara, one of the students that spoke tonight, was my math partner, um, one of my math partners, uh, for the, for the lesson. But it really gave me an opportunity to, um, see the new math program in play. And I just want to talk about one lesson. In, in being a former teacher and being a former third-grade teacher, um, I, I really could appreciate the amount of effort and time that went into this lesson. It was a game, and during this game, students had to roll a dice, had to roll dice, they had to build numbers, they had to make, so they were understanding place value, they talked about the different place values. They made predictions as to who was going to have a bigger number. They did estimating, they did subtraction with regrouping, and they had strategy also built into it because they were trying to build these bigger numbers and have this bigger number. All of this with unbelievably rich math talk. The vocabulary, I mean, they were using words like algorithm, I mean, and they knew what they were talking about. Like, it was, it was, it was so great to see with this, with this age group, but they had to spend so much time, really just, they dug into it for this game, they walked away with so much learning. For this game, they walked away with so much learning and, and it was, it was really great to see how that all played out. And I was glad that I was, Dr. Edwards invited me to come in and, and see that classroom and I thought that was really great. And then just one last minute thing, your last, one last thing, not last minute thing. We are ending another calendar year. I know it's not the end of our school year, but we're ending another calendar year and it was another challenging school year, or calendar year. Um, and I just want to make sure to say thank you to all those that are involved in our district, whether they are working in our district for students, whether they are at home as parents, supporting our students, our students for being engaged and wanting to learn. You know, it's, as we've come out of these past couple of years, which have been difficult and, and hard and, and that, it was, it's so good to see the learning that's starting to happen, really digging in back to that normalcy again of the engagement in, in all of that. And so, um, thank you because I know there's a lot of work that goes into it, a lot of it behind the scenes and, uh, thank you to all though that give, whether you're at home doing that or you're here in our district on behalf of the, on behalf of the students. Um, next up is public comments. So in accordance with Board Policy 2.230, members of the public wishing to offer a public comment have the opportunity to do so. Public comment sheet was made available until, until 7:00 PM here. Uh, board meetings are available on our YouTube channel. We do have public comment tonight. As with all comments, please be aware that it's the board's regular practice to not directly discuss, ask questions, or take action upon public comment until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The board is here to listen. Lack of action or direct response following public comment does not imply any lack of interest in what is being shared. Per Board Policy 2.230, the time allotted for each person to speak during public comment may be shortened. We will not be doing that tonight. We'll keep it at three minutes. To preserve the confidentiality, the board and its president require that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for future consideration at a closed session if necessary. The board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your public comment. Please include your name, whether you're a resident of the district. Limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Long, right here, will be timing and he will raise his hand when the time is up. Please be factual and courteous. Do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board and staff. The first up is Chuck Corbett.
Sorry, I'm just getting over a cold. A little taller than Mr. Edwards and the kid. Good evening, Dr. Schuler, Senior Leadership Team and School Board. My name is Chuck Corbett. I'm a teacher in this district for over twenty-three years. I just wanted to speak tonight and say thank you. I appreciate your support over the years to our, our staff and students and I'm thankful that you do this volunteer job because you want what is best for all children. I remember when I first started in Wheaton-Warnville, how welcoming the community it was, a world of relief being there and how those kids would come into our schools and just be overwhelmed just by all the differences, but they were so welcomed and loved and we embraced those differences and adopted them into our community and we were all the better for it. Now it seems someone is different or dissimilar from us. They're not adopted, but sometimes ostracized. Person's race, religion, or orientation should not determine how we feel about a person. How that person acts and conducts themselves should how we, should make up our minds on how we agree to decide to treat that person. One thing we can all agree on though is let's treat everyone with dignity and respect. Let's have conversations about what we believe, but when we do, let's listen to the other side first before we condemn them. Let's have discourse about our differences, but also know that at the end of the day, we're all human beings and deserve respect. If a book or a tree is going to change someone's beliefs or opinion, I would say that's something that wasn't a real solid foundation to start with. I teach first grade and it's an awesome age. Thing I love is they still get upset when they hear the word hate. And it's usually in a book I'm reading, like the character says, "I hate broccoli," but still, they hate the word hate. So let's try and learn from our children and see hate as a terrible thing and try to find common ground that we can all work towards. Instead of a forged future, let's have a real future. Where when people come to Wheaton-Warnville, they know matter, they know no matter what. They'll be in a place where they'll be respected and become a part of that community. Because that's how kids do it. They make mistakes, they apologize, they forgive each other and they move on. So I just want to say thank you for being a school board that's looking out for all kids and trying to give us a community where everyone feels accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jennifer Castino.
Hello, I'm a little shorter, had to pull it out. My name is Jennifer Castino. I've lived in the district for eleven years. My only child is a middle schooler in the district. Thank you for recognizing that in order for our students to be successful academically, they must be supported socially and emotionally. Thank you for understanding this support takes the form of diverse and inclusive curriculum and materials, inclusive clubs and activities, and celebrating our students' identities, backgrounds, and experiences. Visibility matters. I encourage the board to continue our district's longstanding tradition of academic excellence and to maintain its proactive commitment to diversity and inclusion. Our public schools have a duty to provide equitable education to every student. Our students, faculty, and staff deserve a board and a community who support them. I'm heartbroken by the homophobic vitriol directed at our LGBTQ plus siblings and those who speak up for them. These blatant attempts to dismantle our public schools by dehumanizing and vilifying our LGBTQ plus students and their teachers must not be tolerated. We are at our best as a community when we celebrate our diversity and embrace all we have in common. LGBTQ plus people are fearfully and wonderfully made, endowed by our Creator with inalienable rights, and beloved exactly as they are. I'm grateful my child is growing up in District 200. We must be a district that sees, affirms, and accepts our LGBTQ plus students. We must be a community who loves them just as they are.
Thank you. Next up is Jessica Banazak. Jessica?
I'm also on the vertically challenged end, so. Hello, my name is Jessica Banazak and I actually grew up in this district. I attended Madison, Wheaton-Warnville Middle School, and Wheaton North. And I have also raised my children, who, two of whom are still within the district. I'm here tonight to voice my support for the students, staff, and principal of Edison Middle School for their expressive display, the tree display in the building. There's been slanderous information passed around our community via social media and widely distributed fake newspapers. Um, I'm not going to get into like the, the specifics of those. It's not worth repeating. But this is the position of a loud minority. There's a larger contingent of people who support LGBTQIA plus people and their expression in our schools. Our district community is diverse, as Jennifer mentioned. There are LGBTQIA staff and students in our school buildings and our community. And I recognize that the district and the board can't possibly address every criticism, every negative statement made about it. But I think it's imperative for the district and the board to address this issue publicly. Because, you know, there's no, there's not even a reason to regurgitate the negative untruths, but publicly supporting your LGBTQI students with statements, the students and staff would go a long way in providing that accepting environment that these young people need to succeed. Silence favors the oppressor and while some instances require us to ignore the bully, this is not one of those times. Our young people are watching. At a time when the climate toward the LGBTQIA population continues to become more inflamed and frankly dangerous, we owe it to our young people to take a stand. These people will claim that they are entitled to their opinion and they're allowed their free speech. I hope you will join me in using my free speech to tell them just how wrong they are and how their brand of scare tactics and bigotry is not welcome in our district and we want to be accepting of all and of our diversity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ethan Spade.
Hi there. You'll have to forgive me for looking at this a little bit. I haven't had much time to practice it. So hello, everyone. My name is Ethan Spade. I'm a junior Wheaton North. I've been in the district's schools since kindergarten at Sandberg Elementary and I'm here today to thank the board and various administrators, teachers, and other support staff across the district for their continued support of the LGBTQ community. Uh, most recently, I would like to thank the Edison Middle School principal, Mrs. Bednar, for ensuring all LGBTQ youth at Edison feel welcome. And Edison is a safe space for the queer youth. Small gestures like this can go such a long way with helping students feel comfortable as themselves. I myself, as a member of the community, appreciate the efforts that have been made to make me and my friends feel safe at school. We don't ask for much and we don't ask for a lot. All that we ask for is for a safe learning environment and the same rights that heterosexual people have. Just yesterday, President Biden signed the Respect for Marriage Act into law. This new law requires the federal government and all states to recognize same-sex and interracial marriages if they were legally performed in the past or performed in the future in places where they are still legal. It's truly not that hard to just accept people for who they are. You don't have to go to a pride parade or even talk to us. Just accept us for who we are. We are U.S. citizens that deserve the same rights that you have. We contribute to the economy. We support small businesses and we believe in democracy. We are part of this community and every other small town or large city in the U.S. We just want to be equal. We aren't shoving it in your face. We're just asking for the same rights. Why should we be lesser of a human than you just because we are attracted to different people? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kim Hobbs.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me a few moments of your time to speak. I would like to speak with respect to the updated library learning center selection and reconsideration administrative procedures. I am concerned. This appears to be a strategy to shift the locus of responsibility so that the burden of accountability no longer falls on the board. I fear that you are abdicating your responsibility and failing in your mission if you take this step. The vast majority of LLC materials are not even at issue, so you are hardly staving off a tidal wave of complaints unless you foresee a future acquisition of many materials which may draw critique. I'm concerned that this bears the marks of an effort to deflect reasonable criticism and frankly, to impede the attempts of the community members to have any effective say in what materials constitute the LLC collections. I would ask you to be courageous, be willing to bear public scrutiny so that the community may have the opportunity to influence the schools our children attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Rachel Henigan.
Hi, my name is Rachel Henigan and I live in the district and I have three in the district and one is out of district. I am back for all-day kindergarten. I just found out at a transition meeting that paying all-day IEP kindergarteners don't even get their service minutes based off of a full day. Um, and I was so focused on kindergarten that another parent reminded me that District 200 doesn't even have all-day instructional preschool. What are you guys doing to these sped kids? Not giving them a fair educational chance, that's for sure. In case the parents of instructional classrooms and pre-K and kindergarten didn't know, if your child has an IEP and a diagnosis, all you have to do is say, "I want an out-of-district placement" because District 200 cannot currently provide an adequate education for your child. There are some kiddos you'll never be able to accommodate simply because their needs are only understood by a specialized group of teachers and assistants. But for those IEP kids that just need a hand to hold on to until they've got it on their own, this district fails them from the start. We did just that eleven years ago. They said my son was delayed and we requested an out-of-district placement. However, elsewhere, there are programs that are offering my child the very opportunities that this district falls short of. At the age of three, my kids have, my two oldest have gone to full-day school year-round with extended school year. Both are caught up and my oldest is now back in, at, in District at Monroe. Uh, most parents with kids that have different needs do not understand or even know that they have rights and so does their child in that self-contained classroom. FAP or Free Appropriate Public Education. If a child is delayed, then an appropriate education would be more hours educating to close the gap. But maybe that only makes sense in my head. I was also told that the cost of all-day kindergarten was comparable to daycare. Why does daycare start at 9:00 AM and end at 3:30 when most working parents still have to pay for before and after-school care anywhere with those hours? Daycare centers usually, and I could be wrong here, but they usually have more than one teacher to twenty-four kids for all day. This model is rushed and it doesn't give the students the one-on-one time that they need at that age. If I'm paying $3,600, I want my child to be receiving the same kindergarten education as their peers in a neighboring district, including IEP minutes. I mean, unless the goal is to shuffle them through as fast as we can and collect their money, then congratulations, you've nailed it.
Thank you. Next up is Rosalim Juco.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rosalim Juco and I'm a sixth grade student who attends Edison Middle School. I am here tonight because of the articles posted about Edison's Pride Tree. I am one of the students that helped put up that tree. When I first read those articles, I felt really sad and confused as to why we should get rid of this tree just because it represents inclusivity for the LGBTQ community. I have friends and family who are a part of that community and seeing them be attacked by that article felt scary. Everyone was talking about it at school and most people were nervous and afraid because not only did that article want to get rid of that tree, but it also wanted to get rid of our principal. I think that the tree should stay up because it represents the inclusivity and celebration of the LGBTQ community. And I also think that our principal should stay up because she is a wonderful leader at our school. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Rose. Next up is Shannon Lim Juco.
Hi, my name is Shannon Lim Juco. I'm the parent of two children in the district, one of whom attends Edison. And I'm here tonight because of the recent online attacks targeted at Edison. When our school community is attacked like this, we must take a strong stand in support of our staff and students who are working hard to build an inclusive community in our schools. I want to thank all of our school staff at Edison and throughout District 200 who understand that in order for students to achieve academically and grow into productive adults, they need to feel supported and safe at school. And to our LGBTQ students and families, I'm sorry you had to see those hateful opinions, but please know that there are so many people in this community who support you, who value you and love you. You have a right to bring your authentic selves to school and to celebrate who you are. You have a right to feel safe and included in school. There are many parents and community members who truly want Wheaton to be a place where all students and families feel welcome and we will keep fighting for you. Thank you.
Thank you. And last up is Alicia O'Connell.
Hi, my name... Can I just hold this like this then? Sorry about that. My name is Alicia O'Connell and I have five kids who are either in the district or have graduated. Um, I am here to speak to you tonight about the sexualized Christmas tree at Edison School. To be clear, I would oppose a heterosexual Christmas tree because I'm really struggling to understand the connection between Christmas and sex. I am encouraged that despite the unrelenting effort of some teachers and administrators to advertise sexual identities to minors, there are still children who recognize that school is for academics, not for the nurturing of sexual preferences and certainly not sex-themed Christmas trees. If it weren't for the discernment of a child who had more sense than the adults around him or her to expose such a bizarre display, the community would have no idea that a Christmas tree celebrating sexual appetites is adorning the halls of Edison Middle School. Again, I would stand here tonight and oppose a heterosexual tree with heterosexual ornaments. Imagine a tree decorated with slogans such as "Heteros for Big Boobs" or "Straight Sex Is Great Sex." It's absurd, isn't it? Yet the absurdity that Edison Middle School is peddling sexual identities to minors in the form of a Christmas tree seems to get lost on people. As a matter of fact, the public school agenda to sexualize minors and bombard them with sexual content and identities is deviant. When did public schools assume the role of developing, nurturing, and advocating for the sexual identities of children? This is the responsibility of parents to nap... This is the responsibility of parents to navigate, not ideologically zealous administrators and teachers. To be clear, this is not an attack on a certain group of children. This is a call to defend all children from the attack of educators who are both unwittingly and wittingly violating their minds. Please leave the children alone. Remove sex trees, remove sex posters, remove sex flags, and remove sex books in all forms. Can we allow children to be children and enjoy the sweetness of childhood without promoting sex in their libraries, hallways, and classrooms? It is my recommendation that you remove the sex-themed tree and hold any and all adults responsible for its display, especially since it seemingly violated the Board of Education's gift and donation policy. Thank you.
That ends our public comment for the evening. Dr. Schuler, up to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Crabtree. Have just a couple of updates that I wanted to share with the board tonight. Number one, in your folders, provided a copy of a performing arts calendar that actually is on our website, available to the community. This is top of mind, was certainly thinking about it as I had an opportunity over the last five days to attend three different musical events at Wheaton Warrenville South, both an orchestra show, a holiday pops concert, and a winter, Coral Winter concert. Tomorrow night, Wheaton North, actually, all of their ensembles, I think, have a concert together. And just a reminder to our community that any of our high school events are open to the community, whether it be our musical concerts, our theater events, and it's a tremendous opportunity for the community to not only come out and see the talents of our students, talents of our staff, but also to get a free opportunity to see some incredible performing arts. So Mrs. Layacano is going to send that calendar out with our board highlights, but I encourage everybody to take a look at it. Wanted to mention to the board tonight that in your folder is our six-month update of the gifts that you've generously accepted through your board agenda to the first half of the school year. Our groups combined have donated about $225,000 worth of really important opportunities for our students. We're blessed that we've got PTA groups and groups that support our schools, and so wanted to thank and mention that to the board. Wanted to remind everybody that next week does bring the end of our first semester. This is, will be the first time, I think it was a commitment of the board a while back, to make an adjustment in the calendar, bring that first semester and finals in before winter break. That will happen next week at both of our high schools with their final schedule, and that semester will wrap up on Thursday. Thank you to our staff that have navigated through that adjustment. And again, I'm excited to get some feedback on what that adjusted calendar felt like after we get through, really, the first year with the adjusted calendar. Also want to mention and thank a number of our middle school math staff that came together today to bring closure to the middle school math pilot and formulate a recommendation that should be in front of the board at your January meeting, a recommendation for new math materials. Every time that Mrs. Murphy and her department bring a group of teachers together, I'm just incredibly impressed with the thoughtful dialogue and discussion that really goes into the decision. But I want to make sure that both board and community understand that our staff take great care in how they look at those pilot decisions, how they've really evaluated the two options that were in front of them. And again, I'm excited to bring that work to a close in January. Also, in the last week, our elementary ELA pilot teachers launched the pilot of their ELA materials. Again, that comes on the heels still of implementing the new math materials, and that's a big lift for our teachers, but incredibly thankful that they are continuing to do that learning acceleration work for us. And then finally, I want to mention a chance today to visit the Wheaton Warrenville South Intro to Education program. That Intro to Education program is a part of the Pathway's work that we've talked to the board about quite a few times. And again, just incredibly impressed with our students that are part of that program, the thought that they've put into that Pathway opportunity. Again, there's a lot of good work that's happening in the Pathway's work, expanding that certainly beyond just education. So again, just in the past month, a couple of huge learning acceleration opportunities, some really important career pathways work. You're going to hear tonight an update from Dr. Slaggy about our SEL work, which is, again, very focused on making sure that we connect every child to school, and we provide safe opportunity for all of our students at school. And so I'm excited to continue to see that Vision 2026 work playing out for the board. That's all I got.
Onto our consent agenda. Acceptance of gift to Franklin Middle School. Acceptance of gift to Wheaton Co-op Girls Gymnastics Program. Approval to post curriculum content for College Composition 1 and 2 for Community Review. Approval of zero graphic bond paper bid. Approval of print shop paper bid. Approval of bills payable and payroll. Approval of minutes November 9th, 2022, open and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to July 2021 is allowable by law. Approval of the personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items board members want removed from the consent agenda?
Chris, I don't want anything removed, but I have two.
Okay. Can Dr. Schuler give his remarks and then ask you us some questions?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any additional information.
Now you may ask your questions.
Okay. Two quick ones. On the approval of the zero graphic bond paper bid, there was a revision made and edit, and I'm not sure what that was.
There was a miscalculation in one of the formulas in the tax. It didn't change the final number.
Okay.
It's just one of the numbers above the final number was off, that's all.
Okay, thank you. And then approval to post curriculum content for College Composition 1 and 2 for Community Review. So in, let me see how I wrote it down. The description says it's an intermediate-level dual-credit college composition course. So for the high school credit grade, is that an A level? Like in the grade point average or an I level? Because it's considered an intermediate.
It is an I-level course.
Despite earning college credit?
Yeah, we do have several dual-credit courses that are considered I-level as well.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. On the College Composition 1 and 2, when would that potentially be available for students to take?
Next year.
Thank you. And is it through College of DuPage?
Yes.
Thank you.
Except for our instructors here at Wheaton Warrenville South and Wheaton North would be teaching the course, but it is a COD course.
Other questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. I ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Long.
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Ms. Hudson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Ms. Booten?
Yes.
Ms. Kolevitz?
Yes.
Ms. Cracker?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Next up is adoption of the 2022 tax levy. Dr. Schuler?
So the tax levy was presented to the board at your last meeting. In November, Dr. O'Keefe presented the levy. Nothing has changed from the last presentation. Dr. O'Keefe, is there anything else that you want to add from the last meeting?
No, sir.
All right. So it is recommended for your approval tonight. Obviously, we held the Truth in Taxation hearing in front of your meeting tonight, so we recommend that you move forward with the levy.
Board members, are there any questions or comments? I know we had this presented the last meeting. Okay. I ask for a motion and a second to adopt the resolution and certificates for the 2022 tax levy as presented, that the certificate of tax levy be executed, and that all forms be filed with the DuPage County Clerk.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booten.
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Ms. Hudson, will you call the roll?
Ms. Booten?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Ms. Kolevitz?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Cracker?
Yes. Motion passes. Oral reports. Our first one is early learning and kindergarten overview. I see Dr. Slaggy is heading up to the.
So Dr. Slaggy and Dr. Mary Davis are going to join together in this presentation. And just a little bit of context as Dr. Slaggy kicks this off. Board will remember back at one of your committee of the whole meetings, as we were looking at some of your learning acceleration, both data and important work that you're doing. I think a question came up just on, kind of, where are we in terms of our status, especially with all-day kindergarten percentage of our students that are taking advantage of that? And I think that request was expanded into just understanding or kind of having a status update of early learning opportunities within the district. So the goal tonight is really just to provide you with some information, so you have a current status. And certainly, at the end of the presentation conversation tonight, if there are topics you want to study a little bit further at a future meeting, that opportunity will be there. But I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Slaggy and Dr. Davis to take you through what we have.
Thanks, Dr. Schuler. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Thanks for the opportunity to share a little information about both our kindergarten programming. I'll start off with that, and then I'll be turning it over to Dr. Davis, Principal of Jefferson Early Learning Center, to talk about early childhood programming. So three questions that we want to get answered for you tonight are what programs are offered for early childhood in kindergarten-age students in District 200? We also hope that you'll be able to understand what are the differences between the various programs at early childhood and kindergarten? And then what are the enrollment trends and student demographic compositions of our programs? You'll see us refer to this visual a few times throughout the presentation when we look at the early learning opportunities within our district. For children their ages three to five years old, there's really four different programming learning opportunities. Dr. Davis is going to talk about those. And then for our kids that are five to six years old, they're in the kindergarten age range. We really have our half-day and full-day program, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that with you. So just overview of half-day and full-day kindergarten, and just another piece, just so you know, in your board packets, we did provide you with our kindergarten handbook that goes to all of our parents. We update that every year. It's given out to our parents at the kindergarten roundup, but you'll have last year's right now, but there'll be a new one also coming around the corner here in January. Our half-day kindergarten program is a two-and-a-half-hour program, runs either morning or afternoon. In most of our schools, it's running just in the morning because we have a small amount of sections, but it's 9:15 to 11:45, or 1:00 to 3:30. And our students that are in the half-day kindergarten program, while they're afforded all of our academic courses, for specials, they get physical education once a day, five times a week for 20 minutes, but they do not get other music. They don't go to lunch or recess either. So it is a smaller timeframe, and those students within that program pay the standard registration fee as any of our other enrolling students. Our all-day kindergarten programming runs the full day, just like our grades one through five. So it's 9:15 to 3:30. Our students, in addition to having PE, just like half-day kindergarten, also go to art once a week and go to music once a week, just like our students in grades first through fifth grade. So that is certainly one of the enhanced pieces of the all-day kindergarten. There is an annual tuition for this of $3,600. And a few other pieces, obviously, that come with all-day kindergarten is that there is more time, right? So certainly, an hour of that time is taken up with lunch and recess, so you're getting extended time to socialize, play, some of those pieces. And then certainly, there's more time within the day to dig deeper, right, for enrichment and for intervention, just given the simple constraints of the day, there's more time within that all-day kindergarten. However, both programs offer our core curriculum in math, reading, writing, science, and social Looking back at our enrollment history here, back all the way to 2013, 14, this isn't numbers, and on the next slide, I'll show you this, a hearing percentage. In 2013, 14, you can see out of 900 students, 330 were in all-day kindergarten and 570 were in half-day kindergarten. So, you know, a little more than a third were taking advantage of the all-day kindergarten program, while half-day was being taken up by almost two-thirds. You can see just from the visual there how, over time, that has really changed, right? And as we sit here this year, that's almost completely swapped, right? Where we see really about two-thirds of our kids are taking advantage of the all-day kindergarten program, and about a third of our kids are taking advantage of the half-day. This is the same slide, just with percentages. So you can see how it's just slowly crept up. We've had more and more interest in the all-day kindergarten program. I think the only blip on that radar is 2020, 2021, where that progress kind of evened out. I think people were making different decisions based around the pandemic at that time. You've got to remember, we were also offering a virtual academy at that time. But other than that, once we got past that, again, that trend continued, you know, to 61%. Now, as we sit here today, it's pretty much exactly two-thirds in all-day kindergarten and one-third of our kids taking half-day. And so when you think about program shifts in how we program, we've gone from a district that used to usually have most of our buildings at least running two sections of half-day kindergarten, usually a morning and an afternoon section, sometimes a morning, afternoon, and maybe another morning. And then most buildings usually had one, maybe two, all-day kindergarten sections. And now you can see how that's changed, that's flipped over time. This year, we're offering 26 all-day kindergarten programs, as opposed to, really, most, all of our schools, with the exception of one, are just running one half-day kindergarten section in our schools. So certainly, it's been a shift in how we program and some of those pieces as well. This is just a breakdown of the demographics. This year, currently, with half-day kindergarten versus all-day kindergarten, while we see diversity in both of our programs, we are capturing about 75% of our students that qualify for free and reduced lunch in kindergarten, they're in the all-day kindergarten program. And about 75% of our multilingual students out of all of our kindergartners are taking advantage of the all-day kindergarten program, as opposed to half-day kindergarten. I do want, one other caveat that I didn't mention on the front end, there's a $3,600 tuition. However, there is a reduced rate for those that qualify for free and reduced lunch, so wanted to be sure that I mentioned that as well. Giving you an overview there of kindergarten programming, again, goal of today, though, is we want you to understand overview of all of our opportunities for kids ages three through six. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Davis now.
All right. Good evening, guys. It's nice to be back in front of you again, talking about Jefferson, my favorite topic. So I'm going to cover all the boxes in green. So early childhood, we serve students between the ages of three and five years old. And like Dr. Slaggy said, there's like four major types of instruction or classes or programs that we run here in the district. So I'm going to go through each one of them for you. So I'm going to start with at Jefferson. At Jefferson, we offer three types of programs or services in-house. There's blended classrooms, instructional classrooms, and walk-in speech. Our blended classrooms are a mix of tuition-paying students and special education students. Our instructional classrooms only have special education students in them. And then walk-in speech services are for students who are eligible for speech-only services. I have a few more slides here where I'll go into that a little bit deeper. The classrooms at Jefferson run two-and-a-half hours a day, three or four days a week. Our tuition students have the option to attend three or four days based on their preference. Walk-in speech services are based on their IEPs. So once a student is eligible, if they're eligible for speech-only, for walk-in speech, they get an amount of minutes recommended for their programming, and that's what they come into Jefferson for. All of our classrooms utilize the creative curriculum framework to offer educational experiences that include a lot of different things. So we have circle time, play centers, gross motor. We infuse our learning through all of those. And all students have exposure and direct teaching of pre-academic concepts in the area of math, literacy, science, social studies, and SEL. A little more detail specifically about our blended options. These, again, are general education. These, again, are general education classrooms. They have about 15 to 18 students in each classroom, and we try to balance with a 70-30 split. So we try to have 70% of the population in each of those classrooms be tuition-paying students or typically developing students, and then 30% be special ed. Our enrollment does roll, though, through the year. We get more and more students, and by about springtime, we get pretty tight. So that split may go down to a 50-50 split, just again, depending on how many students we have and how many open spots we have. Typically developing students do pay tuition to attend Jefferson. The three-day option is $184 a month, and then the four-day-a-week option is $245 a month. Our special education students who are in those blended classrooms do not pay tuition, but they do pay our standard registration fees. The next type of classroom I'm gonna talk about is our instructional classroom. Just a reminder, again, these are our special education classrooms. So these classrooms are a bit smaller. We have anywhere between five and 10 students, depending on the severity of need for intervention. And these are 100% special education classrooms. Our students, again, do not pay tuition to attend, but they do pay standard registration fees. All right. Our walk-in speech friends, students are eligible for speech-only services, so they do not come in and attend in a classroom, either those two classrooms that I talked about. They come in to meet with a speech path in a small group. So they might have, through their evaluation, been recommended for 20 minutes of walk-in speech or 40 minutes of walk-in speech. They'll have an appointment with a speech path, come into Jefferson, their parent waits for them, they do some speech, and then they go home. Walk-in speech students do not pay tuition, but they do pay adjusted registration fees, just kind of prorated for the amount of time that they're with us in the building. So this slide attempts to articulate what our numbers are at. I had it highlighted that these were my numbers as of 12-9, but like I mentioned, we do have rolling enrollment. So we have an evaluation team at Jefferson, that that's all they do every single day is evaluations, screenings, you know, trying to support our students in the community. So almost every single day, I'm having a conversation with our evaluation team about another student who will be placed in our classrooms. So my numbers on 12-9 are already different today, and they'll be different in the weeks to come, but that's just the nature of early childhood, students turning three and being eligible for services. So right now, we have 122 tuition-paying students coming to Jefferson, either three or four days a week. Students with IEPs in our classroom, we have 188. Our walk-in speech numbers, we have about 29 students who come in for those walk-in speech appointments. And then this next one, I'm gonna talk about in detail on a future slide. It's called PFAE in our Head Start programs. There are a few students in there that have IEPs, and we support those needs. There's about nine students there. So in total, we're at about 348, which, when I was calculating all of this, I was like, wow, my school is so big. We serve the littlest people, but our numbers are growing, and you'll see that on the next slide. Like I said, our enrollment does increase throughout the year. We do have to provide IEP services for students when they turn three and they're eligible for those. So again, that adds to why we grow over time, and we are projected to open up another section in January. That's my last section in my building, will be completely, completely full there. Enrollment history, I don't go back as far as Dr. Slaggy, but I was able to pull numbers for the last five years, and you can see back in 2018, 2019, we were sitting at about 233 students. Even through the pandemic, we were still identifying students for services, and our numbers have continued to increase incrementally each year. Again, right now, I'm at about 348. We tend to place about eight to 10 students a month, just on average. That's how many students become eligible for services. So when I project out for the next couple months, by May, we'll probably be sitting at about 370 to 400 students. Again, it all depends on who walks in our doors, who's coming to our community, how many students are in early intervention. There's a lot of variables to that, but in general, that's where we sit and where we're probably gonna be looking at. I did include some participant demographics for you here as well, so you can kind of have an idea of what our population looks like. At Jefferson, our IEP number is obviously pretty high. If you looked at demographics across the district at other schools, you wouldn't see 64.5% of students with IEPs, of course. So that's a number that stands out, but you can kind of see where we sit with the rest of our students. And then I'm gonna go back to that language I talked about earlier, that was that line of nine students. So PFAE is short for preschool, for all, expansion grant, and Head Start. And so we offer a few programs in our district. They're housed at our elementary schools, and these are offered through our collaboration with Metropolitan Family Services. They call themselves MFS for short, so if you've heard that term before, that's what that means. MFS is the one who writes for this grant, and they are the ones who determine the enrollment into these, the enrollment or the acceptance into these programs. But generally speaking, I can share that they are designed for students who are either at risk of academic failure or at risk due to low-income status. So these classrooms run full day, five days a week. And like I said before, there are, there's a small number of students who have IEPs that we're able to support while they're in those programs. So we support about nine of them, but those classrooms have about 20 students total in them. And right now, this year, they are at, and we appreciate them, taking these programs in at Lowell, Hawthorne, Johnson, and Longfellow. And that's the end of the information, the presentation that I have for you. Certainly open to any questions, answering anything that you may be still wondering.
Board members, any questions for Dr. Davis or Dr. Slaggy? Mr. Long?
First question I have, do we have any data on why the increase to half, you know, from half-day to full-day, why we've...
I don't know if I have any, like, raw data on it, but, you know, just even serving in the principalship and then coming into this, I think, I think there's been a general appetite from parents to have their kids in a full-day program as time has gone on.
And do we have any data on student performance as they enter first and second grade?
Yeah. We, as they enter first and second grade, we haven't...
You know, do they perform better because they've been in kindergarten all day is really the question.
Yeah. We ran some pieces a while back. Certainly, if we wanted to find out some new information, we certainly could. One thing that we have seen is some general increase in learning for some of our students that may be at risk if they are participating in the all-day program. However, for our students that aren't having a lot of at-risk factors, and again, this, I'm saying something that we looked at, I want to say maybe four or five years ago, we didn't see a significant increase as opposed to half-day, full-day for students that were not, that weren't demonstrating some risk factors. But again, if we wanted to look, get more information on that, we certainly could.
And then, you know, just given the, how kind of rapidly the numbers have changed, makes me think we should be talking about, do we want to go to all-day kindergarten? And what are, number one, what are the implications? Obviously, there's added cost, and so do we want to absorb that? See, there's a revenue shortfall if we stop charging it. And then are there any other restrictions? Are there space restrictions? Do we think we could hire the staff if we decided to go that way?
Other questions or comments?
I had a question. As a parent who has set the reminder for March of when to sign up for all-day kindergarten, are there parents that want all-day kindergarten and don't get it? Because I know that is a stressful time of if you want it, really hoping you get it.
Yeah. We have a handful of parents who are on waiting lists for their homeschool. However, we always then offer them, if available, which we do have spots available, and we have during my time here, at the closest school to them. For example, this year in our all-day kindergartens, we kept them out at 24. And so if there is, let's say, you were number 25, and we weren't open, there was not another section open, or you came in the middle of the year, we would say, you know what, there's a spot at Emerson available, would you like that? So we still are giving that opportunity to the parent. So has a parent been denied it only at their homeschool? It's a small amount, but that's where it would sit.
And you mentioned that there were tuition waivers for all-day kindergarten. Can you explain how those work? I think you didn't say tuition waiver, but a reduced tuition?
Yeah. It's based upon the free and reduced lunch application. So if any of our families fill that out, certainly there's a formula that's run through and run through the business office as well. And if they qualify for either free or reduced, they then get the reduced tuition rate.
What's the reduced rate, though? Is it a sliding scale, or is it just a...
It's just a flat rate of 240 annually. Or 200, my apologies, 200. So 20 a month.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that for both free and reduced?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
I have a couple more.
Yep.
So if I understand correctly, in the state of Illinois, we're required to provide half-day, even if we were to switch to full-day, or switch to offering full-day.
Yeah.
But currently, there's only one school that has two sections of half, or two sections of half-day. I think I'm just trying to get to that space issue. If we currently have most schools having a space for half-day and full-day, oh, I see. You know what, I answered my own question. So there could be a space issue, because if you have two full-day programs, where does that half-day go in a school?
I would tell you, with looking at that column, though, Angela, I don't think you're off on that. So I think, given that all, I think all of our schools, other than Weasbrooke, are really only offering one half-day section, there isn't going to be a space issue. So there may be another program that's using that half-day kindergarten room the other half the day.
So then would those parents who wanted to choose the half-day because they have it, would those students go into the all-day kindergarten class and leave half-day?
That's often what happens. So as most districts have made that, if they've made a transition to full-day, they just have an opportunity for parents that are still selecting the half-day option for their kids to leave at lunchtime. They may cluster the students into one section so that it's a little less disruptive across the programs, but that's typically the case. I have seen some districts, I wouldn't advocate for it, and we're down the road and even talking about it, that have only opened half-day opportunities at specific sites, but more of them just offer an opportunity then for kids to leave at half-day.
Okay. Thank you. I'm curious, the cost difference between three or four days of early childhood? I guess, I think I might have answered my question with that, too. I feel that kindergarten half-day is significantly more than the early childhood half-day, but is it just because of that one extra day? Is that...
So the question is, the kindergarten half-day more time because we have five days a week?
I guess. I think I was surprised to see that it's $360 a month versus $240 a month for that one extra day.
For, are you, I just want to make sure I'm capturing your question. This is for, are you speaking...
Right. I guess, you know, comparing a half-day of kindergarten, when currently, if you have an all-day kindergartner, the parents are paying for half-day, that half-day is $360 a month. If parents are tuitioning into early childhood, those four half-days are $240 a month. So I'm just thinking, how is that?
So the full-day...
I don't know, that just kind of...
Yeah. Full-day kindergarten being 360 a month versus the half-day of instructional.
Correct. Because the half-day of kindergarten would not typically fall on the responsibility of the parents that's provided by the district. You see it?
Yeah. I think you are. So, no, I think fair. If you do look at the differential, though, as you move from three to four days, right, with preschool, and then like imagine moving that up to five days, I think there's just a little cost differential between our cost to operate for those programs at early childhood versus the cost to operate at the elementary school, where we're also bringing in to play the extra specialist time, meaning PE, art, music, some of the other pieces that come into play. So I will tell you this, that that cost, when it was originally calculated, and then we did have a reset, Dr. Slag, how many years ago?
I think two years ago, when we brought it down to 3,600.
Yeah. So two years ago, we had a reset and actually brought that fee down and did it through looking specifically at a calculation of what's the actual cost. So in any opportunity, not opportunity, in any situation where we're charging a fee, we can only charge a fee to cover the cost to operate the additional service. So you're right, every student gets a half-day kindergarten that is at no cost other than the normal registration fee. That additional fee for the other half the day, what we're allowed to actually assess the fee at is our cost, no more, right? We can't set the fee so that we're making money. There obviously is a little bit of estimation in that the staff salary in each room is slightly different, so it's in an aggregate across the district. But again, I think, I think Mr. Long had asked earlier, right? I think there are two potential courses for future study, right? One is a course of future study, looking at what would it take to offer a universal full-day opportunity for everybody? And obviously, there's some costs and numbers we'd have to bring together. I think the second path that we would want to do either way, especially as you look at that shift even over the last two years, is again, continue to reassess that fee, right, based on how many kids we have that are now in the full-day versus half-day. I do think we ought to look at what, you know, as we should be doing anyway, look at, is there an opportunity to, again, reassess that fee and perhaps bring it down even a little bit more regardless, so...
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Davis, thank you. So I noticed the numbers don't quite play out to that 70-30% right now, so how do we account for providing those typical peers for the IEP students?
Yeah. Excuse me, I'm sorry. So when we design our class list at the beginning of the year, we do have it as a 70-30 split, really looking at our tuition-paying students and our IEP students coming together in one classroom and doing that. But as time goes on, we have to serve the students who come in and get the evaluations and our...
And it's the IEP kids who are coming in and not the, so you wouldn't have...
Yeah.
Typically wouldn't have a lot of new tuition-paying kids coming in mid-year.
Right. Yeah. Not a ton, but we do have some. We have little friends starting right after break, you know, so we do have some trickle in as they hear, and as long as we have the spots open, yeah, then they absolutely can start mid-year.
Okay. Thank you.
But yeah, we don't have as many coming in. Yeah. Sure.
Oh, one more question.
Sure.
So what happened to phonology class?
Pardon?
Phonology class? Did that...
I'm not a...
The phonology program, I think, is still at Madison. I don't think it, it's not at Madison?
No. No, it's not, it's not a class in the district any longer.
Oh, my apologies.
I wasn't, yeah, I'm sorry. And I wasn't in this position to know all the history behind that, but I do believe we're serving those students here at Jefferson in other classrooms or potentially walk-in speech services. So the students were still eligible for services. I think they were just looking at different ways to serve them. Yeah, I don't...
We can get to that answer.
Okay. Thanks.
Mrs. Booton?
I guess I just wanted a little more clarification on what the plan is to look at whether or not we offer all-day kindergarten to everybody. Do you know what I mean? As we look at this data, and there's clearly shifting to all-day kindergarten, at what point do you, as an administration, say, okay, we need to really start looking at that? Or is that, I'm just kind of confused on when that actually happens.
But we haven't mapped that out, so I guess I'm asking for your feedback and helping us to determine that, certainly as a board. What I guess I would tell you as a practical matter is that there will come a point, if the percentages continue to adjust. And we've started to see that probably at one site specifically this year, where there's a question of the viability of the half-day section, right? If you get to a point at a school where you've only got 10 students left or eight students left that are expressing interest in the half-day, that doesn't necessarily become a very viable section of kindergarten. So I think, just very practically for us, I think that would be the point that would drive it. I don't think we're there yet from our end, but again, as you look at that trend chart, you know, if that trend continues in terms of the adjustment, I think we could get there relatively soon, where you would really question is, you know... question is, you know, are, are we still offering kind of viable half day sections, right? If you've got seven or eight kids in it, that, that isn't, well, you can certainly provide the academic experience to seven or eight students. I don't know that that's necessarily the social developmental experience you want in kindergarten if, if, if you don't have a, what I would call a very viable section. Dr. Slag, any, would you want to add to that?
No, I think that that's, that's a fair assessment. Once you start looking at really, really small numbers, you're not getting the full experience. So it's something we want to monitor and keep looking at, you know, so you're spot on there.
And your, your cost, again, I don't know the numbers and I don't want to speculate the, the numbers, but clearly your, your, the expenditure side is going down to make that transition because again, you know, from a staffing side, you're, you know, at all those schools that have one section of half day, you're in essence adding a half of an FTE at, at each of those schools. So you may be down to a point now where you would be potentially adding seven FTE plus some specials times. So, so that element, that equation, our part of it has come down, but Mr. Long is right. You are, you would be taking a significant hit on the revenue side of your budget, obviously, as, as that goes away. So you just have to remember that on the financial side, it's both an increase in expenditure and a loss in revenue that you'd have to put together to, to evaluate. There'd be some offset of revenue through the fact that if we are universal full day, we would claim a full day for every kindergarten student. Right now, in terms of state funding, we are only claiming a half of, of each student because of the tuition element. But we, we're not significantly subsidized, you know, through, through evidence base. So that is off, you know, that's not as significant as if we were a tier one district.
And then can I just, I just want to verify what I heard you say, because I'd always been under the impression that there was a space issue. And did you say there, you don't feel that there is?
I, I think it'd be hard pressed to, to make that. Again, it, it would certainly squeeze a little bit of your, your flexibility within a school. And what I mean by that is that, you know, certainly as you go into each school year and Dr. Slag, he manages that elementary staffing plan, there are always bubbles, right? Over the summer, you know, inevitably students move in and they happen to all move in at the same grade level and we magically go from three to four sections or two to, to three sections. We are in a place where I can comfortably say to you, we can manage that across most of our schools, right? We have some flexibility of space, not a ton, but the ability to not be in a spot where at the last minute, we add a section and say, you know, we no longer have an art room or a music room or a, right? So we, we would squeeze a little bit in, in some of, of, of that space, but you know, that's also part of the intentional design of some of the, at least at the two buildings where we're doing library learning center renovations, we're focusing on some of that small group instructional space to support that as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Paulson, did you?
Yeah, most of my questions were already asked. So first off, I mean, I'm super happy that we've been doing this for 10 years now. I know a lot of other school districts are still struggling with how to offer all day kindergarten as a program. So great success there. Do we, I guess as it relates to tuition, do we know how many of our students are paying the full tuition amount and are, are students or families deciding not to do all, all day kindergarten because of the tuition amount?
First question I just want to clarify, do we know how many students are paying the full tuition as opposed to free and reduce?
Yes.
We can get that for you. We don't have it.
Just curious.
We have, we have it, yes. And then I think the second question, Mr. Paulson, was are there people choosing to have day because of the price? You know, we, we don't, we haven't formally surveyed folks on that, but I would say I typically heard maybe from a handful of folks that are saying, you know, asking about that. But traditionally, I will say, we have not heard that that's the reason not choosing to do it, but I, I don't want to speculate and say it doesn't come into play for some folks.
So I guess, you know, you're asking us for, you know, ideas, questions. My question would be, so what would you want to do as an administration if demand increased a huge amount or we had some targeted need in our student achievement that we needed to, sorry, push increasing all the kindergarten programs? Is there something that you would bring to us that would recommend, that you would recommend that we need to make this significant change or we need to do something better? I guess rather than us suggesting or bringing up ideas, my idea, what's, what would you bring back to us to, to try to move the needle forward, I guess? I guess from, from a, from a student achievement standpoint.
Sure.
And I guess student achievement as it relates to first grade, second grade, third grade performance, because that's how this whole conversation started, right? And so we recognize that one of, I think, I think I remember that one of the key indicators of achievement, you know, grades one through three was do kids get into the schools early, get the supports, participate in all the kindergarten. So, you know, is that, is that one of the needs we're going to measure that what might lead us to making an improvement or enhancement to our all day kindergarten program? And so I guess, you know, that's hard for the board to make that decision. So that would be my question back is what would be that trigger? So just, I guess, watching the data. And then, and then finally, kind of going back to the public comment, I'm curious, maybe in the future conversations, what is, what is the special education services look like for all day kindergarten? That's something that wasn't covered in this and it was just asked in public comment. I'm just interested in learning about that at some point.
Want to comment on it now or just future?
Sure, if you're ready.
Got a former special education director here, so I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Davis to start.
I can help with that. Okay, so at, at the kindergarten level, if you are eligible for an IEP, you may be eligible for a variety of levels of support. It's called a continuum of support. So there's consult level, there's resource level, instructional level, and it may, you could be eligible for it out of district placement. Okay, so going with the placements inside of our district, we have a variety of instructional level classes that are at different elementary schools. Those are full day and students do not pay tuition to attend those either. But if their needs warranted, they are recommended for a full day instructional special education classroom. If they don't need that type of setting, they're recommended typically then for a resource level of support. And at elementary, it's kind of like a percentage of your day where you get services. And that's determined after an evaluation, that's determined after looking at present levels, their goals, what they need to work on, what their accommodations may be, and then recommendations are made for the kindergarten level. So when meetings are happening at Jefferson, before they transition to the kindergarten level, we make the assumption that they're going to a half day program because the district's program is a half day program. We don't know at that time if parents are going to register for all day, be interested in that or not. So we, we take that into account, trying not to pull little guys out of the classroom, trying to infuse as much special education support into the classroom as possible, but that's kind of how that works. Again, unless their needs do warrant an instructional program, then they would be recommended for a full day, non-tuition paying classroom. Does that help?
Yeah, I'm just asking in response to the comments.
Yeah, we really write the minutes based on their needs. Yeah, we're not writing minutes based on half day, full day. We're really looking at the child as a whole, what goals they have, how many minutes we need to be able to get at those, utilize our supports and services to intervene with that. And that's kind of how the IEP is written for the following year.
What would cause either an early childhood or kindergarten certain level of service that we are not able to meet that, that would require the parent or the family to choose to, or we, we would send?
Yeah, we would, we would make a recommendation if we weren't meeting a child's needs. So if they weren't accessing F A P, if they weren't getting a free appropriate education, we determine that by their progress on goals, truly. If they're making progress on their goals, then we're doing, we're doing what we can and we're always trying to do more of that. But if we're not able to, to see that progress, then the IEP team would come around the table with the parent and talk about, you know, where, where can those needs be, be best met? And it may be an out of district placement that, you know, offers things that we don't, we don't have in a public school system.
Can I follow up on that?
Sure.
So I guess I, this is new information for me to take in. If you have a student coming out of early childhood, transitioning into kindergarten, but not having need to be placed in an instructional kindergarten class, but still has an IEP, it's a percentage of their school day that their minutes or services are determined?
So there is needs that a student has, right? And there's goals that are written and there's accommodations that are written. When you get to like the placement page on an IEP, you do have to put in minutes and those are taken out of your total. So it ends up being a percentage of your day, yes. But we're not looking at a percentage of the day and minusing or dividing minutes by that based on enrollment. We're really looking at what does the kid need, what kind of interventions? And that's what drives the minutes in placement.
Okay, so the minutes would remain the same regardless if the parents decided to pursue a full day, to pay for a full day?
Correct, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have the ability to, from a data, as a student achievement standpoint, track students who started Jefferson and then continue through, all the way through third grade and see their academic trajectory versus those that just come in at a half day level?
That's a question.
It's a question on parent view, actually. Like one of the certain, like it's, my children, three of them went to Jefferson as tuition students and it's on their data, like on their parent view information sheet. So there's got to be a way to?
Yep.
Yeah, I know the data was run a few years ago and.
Yeah, I'd just be interested in kind of proving out the value of the early childhood program, whether it's the special needs students or the tuition paying students.
Yeah, we, we have that ability to look at different pieces.
Anybody else before I go? Just a couple of questions. So Dr. Davis, you mentioned, excuse me, where you're going to be opening up your last section. What, what happens should we get an influx?
Great question. So like I started with, we try to keep 70, 30 as our split and we have about 15 to 18 students projected for those classrooms. Early childhood classrooms can go up to 20, so we could push the limits a bit on those classrooms. We can go to 50, 50, we can go up to 20 students. That looks a lot different though than a classroom of 15 early childhood students. So we'd have to talk, talk about that for sure.
Okay, just a couple of other things, you know, so as we're thinking about, thinking about future, it's not just the physical space or the classroom FTE, we'd have to look at the specials, we'd have to look at just any other things that are, you know, would be, you know, just kind of, kind of looking at that, you know, looking at that piece as well. Question on the walk-in speech. So as a, as a long time ago, parent of a child, early childhood student who had walk-in speech, we used to do it at the element, the future elementary school. So do we not do that anymore?
No, no, we don't do that.
It's all at Jefferson?
Yeah, it's all at Jefferson. Yeah, the last, the last couple of years, since the building was built, I believe, it's all been at Jefferson. Prior to that, walk-in speech was at Madison, there was a phonology classroom there and walk-in speech was mainly done at Madison, so.
Back in my day, it was done.
Prior to that.
Pleasant Hill and everywhere else, you went to your, whatever school it was that you were, that you were going to. I think that's all that I had.
And Chris, so there is the option then if you have a walk-in speech student, which I didn't have, like you can tuition in and then they'll get their minutes during their time in class.
Got it.
Rather than like a separate visit, so that's a nice option.
Yes, and we do have students that, that do come to our classrooms. They are walk-in speech, but they really value early childhood, they want to be part of our classrooms and they do, do add that too.
Kind of disappointed about phonology program because that was definitely more than a 20 to 40 minute time and seemed to really serve a good purpose, so.
And one more thing too, I, I was thinking about when you were mentioning, you know, we're not really sure if they're going to go to, to kindergarten, you know, half day or full day. You know, is that something though that as we as a district could be, hey, parents of our three and four year olds, we're starting to think about this, like, or, you know, a survey of some kind? I guess I'm just trying to, you know, gauge, as we watched it go like this, it could do this again. You know, we see those, those cyclical moments, but just, just to be sure that, you know, this is something that the community of, who have young children are, are, are still going to be wanting.
I think that could be situational though too, because I think about when my son entered kindergarten, I wanted half day because he was getting services outside of school and like I, every, you know, those spots at Easter seals are really hard to get and when you get your time, you want to keep your time. And, you know, fortunately the school was able to work with me to, you know, because I was like, I really need morning kindergarten because he's got all this stuff in the afternoon. And so I guess, you know, I, I think Dr. Schuler said that, you know, there's the option to leave half day. And I think in my situation, if I were to go back and had that opportunity, I think I would have been like, well, I'll go all day, but two days a week, he needs to come out for half a day. Like, do you know what I mean? Like can they, can it be that kind of a situation? Because he would need to leave to go get his private services that we had set up. Do you know what I mean? So for kids, because we have a large number of students with IEPs coming out of Jefferson who are going to be entering into our kindergarten, and I don't know what kind of services those kids are getting outside of school, depending on that, that, do you know what I mean? So it could be, I would take three days of all day and two days of half day because of my child's IEP kind of a thing. And I don't know, there'd just be a lot of things to look at there as far as how that would work.
I'm thinking trend, you know, as we saw the trend shift, are we, you know, anticipating that trend to shift back or continue to stay there?
I also think if we look at surrounding districts, most, a good portion of surrounding districts are now offering full day kindergarten, so it's a consideration. And part of me wants to bring up the fact that our current influx of early childhood kids who were sort of born during or shortly before the pandemic have some more need. And I wish we could really, I, I know you're so tight on room in, in providing that to students who may not qualify just because of circumstance and that would be a short-term kind of thing, but I don't have any solution for that. Just thinking all that.
Thank you both.
Sure. Thank you.
Next up, another oral report, Vision 2026, social emotional learning updates. So Dr. Slag, I see you're staying right there.
All right. Pleasure to have an opportunity to talk to you about our social emotional learning, some of our goals and updates for you this year. And I'm going to be highlighting some of the things that you'll see on your, on your dashboard and some of your goals. And certainly we'll obviously take any questions as we finish up. So one place where we start when we're talking about social emotional learning is our framework for SEL. This was developed in 2018, 19 by a group of our district stakeholders. It's really rooted in research that supports emotional and behavioral health and student learning. And really this was our district's attempt to not only define SEL, but cover really the, the breadth and depth of what social emotional learning is. And then really the purpose of then the framework is, as we work through every year and as we plan goals on a yearly basis or when we look out three or five years, we're always aligning our programming to our framework. So we're know, we always know we're in a place where we're aligning programming to work that is rooted really in research that supports emotional behavior health and student learning. Our purpose in SEL, I think it's important to point out really threefold, right? One, to support and improve student learning. Two, to provide supports for our students that may have emotional and/or behavioral health concerns. And then three, really thinking about it through the lens of enriching the school experience for our kids, whether that be through, through relationships and/or extracurricular opportunities. As I go through the presentation today, another lens that I encourage you to look through it, this is certainly a way that we look through our programming in the social emotional learning space, is really through a layered approach. And, and as I talk about different strategies and/or programs, it's important to keep in mind that some strategies may apply to all students in a particular school, grade level or our entire district. However, some of our strategies may just be for a very small group of students or students with specific needs. This is an overview of the goals and strategies I'll be talking about today. Our work in school connectedness, our extracurricular participation, our work in behavioral wellness. I'll be talking about our data approaches and, and assessment, our programming around signs of suicide and our acknowledge care and tell philosophy, highlighting some new work with our student access to outside care. And then lastly, I'll be talking a little bit about the culture we're building around growth mindset. So one place I start after I talk about our framework that I think is really, really important is to always remind our board and our community around our commitment to school connectedness. We have a goal this year, you'll see it right on your dashboard, it's reported on your dashboard as well, is to ensure all, that all of our students are connected to school through a trusted adult. Why is this important? There's certainly ample research that says that this supports student learning. But secondly, when a kid is connected to school, not only should we see improvement in student behavior, this is one of the biggest tools we have. in student behavior, this is one of the biggest tools we have at actually decreasing emotional stress. One of the tools that we use to do this is our relationship mapping process. Different than, than previous years, not only will we be and have done relationship mapping here in the fall, but we're also going to be, as part of report on your dashboard, it's going to be a secondary survey also this spring. So when, when we see that our students are not connected, they're reporting they're not connected, our teams get together, they work, they look at who is, who isn't connected. And I'll talk a little bit about what that looks like as we go on to the next goal. This is just a reminder of where we were last year, 2021, 2022. This is only from the fall. As I said, next year on your dashboard, or at the end of this year, or as I report in the spring, I'll report out where our students with a trusted adult are after a May survey is given. One of the tools though that we have in our pocket around connecting our kids to our school culture, to, to our adults, is through our extracurriculars, through our clubs, activities, and athletics. Again, this is another data point that's reported on your dashboard, so certainly important, something that we value. Why is kids being connected to clubs, activities, and athletics important? One, it supports connectedness, right? So certainly sometimes when we see kids are not connected, this is a tool we have in our toolbox right away to, to figure out, hey, can we get them connected on something that's of high interest, right? I think it's also too important to remember that extracurriculars many times are the places where our kids are demonstrating some of those really, really key, what we would call social academic skills, that are life skills, right? They're being able to play those out in real life situations, whether it's on the field, court, in a club, on stage, whatever it may be, there's that opportunity so it enriches the school experience. And then there's clear association with school success, right? Kids that are involved in extracurricular, extracurriculars have higher attendance and achievement. So how are we doing this? You're familiar with, last year we expanded our offerings at all levels. In particular, we really expanded them at the elementary level and then, and then certainly at the secondary level. This year though, our high schools have taken that data into consideration and started looking at our freshmen that were not participating in a club activity and sport. And they've both action planned around that to connect with those students who were not engaged in, in a club or sport or athletic and, or activity, they've brought them in. First of all, they found out what the reason was, why. So some might have ample reason, but others may not. And they really tried to genuinely connect them with something of high interest. So you have a deliberate adult reach out to our students that are now sophomores who were in nothing the entire freshman year. So we're excited about the work that our high schools are doing around that. And just a data point that I'd share with you in the summer. So 2018, 19 was really our last full year of having our extracurricular participation data at the high school. And in that, that year, 2019, we had 66% of our kids engaged in an extracurricular. As you know, you guys, you all made a commitment to, to adding and, and supporting that work. And at the district level, we had 72% of our kids last year participating in an extracurricular sport, activity, or club. And just to kind of quantify that, we got about 4,000 kids in our high schools, so a 6% jump is around 240 students if you're trying to quantify that by students. I also just put Wheaton Warrenville South data there, they, they really had significant increase. 18, 19, 57% of their kids were involved in extracurriculars. And last year, 72, 72 or 72 or 74% of their kids, so a significant jump there too. They've done some really good work. And, and again, I just, I think it also points out to our work and the, the community's desire to really have a total school experience for their kids. You know, as I mentioned at the front end of the presentation, you're going to hear me kind of, kind of go from topic to topic because SEL is a broad piece, you know? So we, we move out of relationships and extracurriculars and we dive right into behavioral wellness. A goal of ours is to make sure that we're supporting the student behavioral needs of all of our kids so that we can have optimal student learning environments. Why is this important? When kids are well behaved in the classroom, learning increases, right? And so how are we doing this? Well, one action that we already have in place is a classroom behavioral framework. I've included that in your packet on the next page. It really just outlines the work that we expect, especially in the EC and K5 space for a well managed classroom so that we can have really high levels of learning. But kind of two pieces that I want to highlight that are new this year. This summer, we piloted Camp Kinder right here at Johnson for our students that were not engaged in a preschool setting. And for any students that may have demonstrated or that we knew of that had demonstrated maybe behaviors in a preschool setting, we were able to bring them in for a week before the school year with the kindergarten teacher, get them acclimated to the building. Our plan is this summer to, to run that at all 13 of our schools. We think that that's going to be a really key intervention when we look at bringing anywhere from five to 10 of our students at each of our schools, depending on need, into the building before the school year. You really limit anxiety, you allow for a smoother transition for our, some of our youngest learners. The second piece is, we are currently working on a suite of behavioral interventions for our students that may need more space at the intermediate level. We anticipate those new interventions being rolled out. Good news about a lot of those interventions is that they're not foreign to our staff. A lot of them focus around connecting. Actually, one of them is called check and connect. And it's all about an individual checking and connecting with another student. Layered data and assessment processes. So another goal of ours is to implement screening for social and academic behaviors at the elementary and middle school level. So again, why is this important? One, the, the current screening tool that we're utilizing, I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment, is there's a high correspondence to social and school success. It's a valid and reliable tool. And it also provides us an overview of how our kids are doing in school. So not only a school overview, but a district overview, right? So we know how to allocate resources, so we know how to support our schools to meet needs. And then we also have an opportunity to get a complimentary data point. If we have a screening piece on our students at the intermediate level and the middle school levels, when you're looking at a student that may be struggling academically, it's always a good piece to have how a student's doing socially or behaviorally as well, because that does impact academic behavior. So, so really how are we doing this? How are we really layering our data in and looking at our assessment processes? Two approaches. One, we want to make sure that we're not looking at any one data point has the end all be all for our kids, right? So everything is, should be in context, especially when you're in the, in the emotional health space. And then two, this year, as part of our goal, we're in the full implementation of SABERS. We're doing that fourth through seventh grade with our kids. So we've got an elementary piece and then a, a middle school piece. And in SABERS is, is, the SABERS data is filled out by the teacher on social, academic, and emotional areas. There's also a MySABERS piece at the middle school level as well, where students are filling this out as well. And just a data overview on that. So this is our fall data piece just from our SABERS. So there is no no risk category, but our original data or our first fall kind of glance at it, 90% of our students came out as low risk for social, academic, behavioral, and emotional issues or concerns with 9% some risk and 1% high risk. In the middle school, 93, 7, and 1. I put this visual up here over to the right of the 80, 15, 5. In this, you know, traditional research within schools, as you look at systems, would tell you, a school is really functioning well academically, behaviorally, socially, emotionally, if 80% of their kids are on level or on track. And that's where you should gear the majority of your programming. And then typically around 15% really need some intervention and/or support and 5% really need a lot of intense intervention. So when we look at just this one screening point, again, this is only the teacher reports side of it, when you look at that one screening point on it, it would tell you overall, right? The social, academic, behavioral needs of our kids are in a good place. It would also tell you at, at elementary and middle school level, right? That for 8 to 10% of our students, we got to make sure that we're programming well and supporting those students. And so if I go back to programming and layers, remember there are some things that are for all kids and, and some things that just some of our students need. And we want to make sure we're, we're kind of meeting all of those needs wherever our kids may be on the continuum. This is just another visual when we think about layered data and assessment, when one kind of piece of information is not being the only thing considered, when we think about what do we have in addition to our academic data? And for our kids, we, we, we know if they have a trusted adult or not, we know if they're participating, if they're engaged in school and co-curriculars. For our fourth through seventh graders, we, we have a norm reference tool for screen to look for risk factors for social, emotional behavior. And then on the bottom for more informational, the BSAT is our screening that we do with our signs of suicide program. So this could lead to us, you know, having to utilize our risk of harm to self or risk of harm to other protocols. So those are not per se things that we have on individual students with their protocols and their district data why things that tell us, hey, do we need to add more supports on their places? And then we track our hospitalizations. I know Mrs. Crabtree talked about a presentation we did a couple of weeks ago and a lot of that focused on our program and that our emotional wellness coordinators that support our students who are coming out of a hospitalization. So certainly that data drove some of those decisions to put folks in that position. And we think it's supported our students, our families, and really our entire school system so that other people could be freed up to support kids at different levels. We continue to have to go around acknowledge care and tell. So the goal around this is insurance, to ensure the students know how to advocate for peers and themselves when a risk of harm may be present. So this, we do through the signs of suicide program. Acknowledge, care, tell means acknowledge, listen to your friend, don't ignore threats, care, right? Let a friend know you care and tell a trusted adult so they can help. This is programming that our eighth, ninth, 11th, and 12th graders receive. Not only do they receive a lesson on it, at the conclusion of that lesson, that's when they're given the BSAT survey, right? And if there's any at-risk pieces on there, that's when our protocols kick in place. But really the, the other side of that is, we're creating a culture, right? Where we can make sure peers are on the lookout to help and support friends that may be in need and where people will come forward if, if they're really in need, right? And this is important because we want to prevent self-harm in our schools and for our students. To the, to that end, something new, and I know we've given you a few written updates about it and we, we hope to even tell you more about this as the school year goes on. You know, for some of our students, they need support more so than what we can provide within the school day, right? For our student service teams, our psychologists, our social workers, counselors, they work incredibly hard, but they see a lot of students and really their main goal is to make sure kids are accessing the education, right? But many of our students need enhanced support and care outside, whether it be for emotional, mental distress, behavioral, substance abuse, whatever it may be. Our kids need that outside care. There are, there is a portion of our students that need that. To that end, we've partnered with a group called Referral GPS this year. And the, the work around this is really to remove barriers for students that are in need of that access. So Referral GPS is a large database with multiple search factors within their database. You can search by type of care needed, insurance, age, language spoken, radius, wherever you're at. And this allows our student service folks to either make referrals to families that may be seeking it. It also allows our families, there's a version where our families can access this totally separate. And then unique with the partnership with Referral GPS is they also provide what we call care or case navigation. So even though there's a desire many times for families to get the help for their kids that they need, sometimes getting an appointment or getting in is just really, really difficult. And Referral GPS has established relationships with the majority of the care providers within a 10, 20 mile radius of here. So they will actually take a parent, do a care navigation session with them, just as part of their work and our, our agreement with them. So it's not sitting on our student service providers and we're able to hopefully prioritize and, and help get our kids what they need, right? So we're excited about this relationship. All of our student service staff have been trained on this. Amit Akers actually come out and trained our, even worked with our administrators on it. So we know we have information, we know that we can support our kids, and this is just another tool in our toolbox. And then lastly, I'll end with how we continue to promote a, a culture of growth mindset and high expectations, right? So we've got a mindset strand in our SEL plan. And, and really that's focused around belief and hope that kids can do amazing things. And that plays into improving student learning, right? And we want to make sure that we're developing staff members and teachers and folks in our buildings that promote growth for kids, right? And really that's through belief that all kids can learn at, learn at high levels and then holding kids to high expectations. So how we have approached that, really through a lot of the professional learning that we've done, right? This, before the school year launched, we, we brought together leadership teams from all of our buildings and, and trained them on really the depths of how learning happens. And then we let those team members go back to their building and train their building member, their building team members. And then we've also done work in the mindset space around math, right? Around how in the, in the math space, kids need an opportunity to work through challenges, that all kids should be held to a high bar and, and really believing that all kids can learn at high levels. Even on our January 9th institute day, we'll be bringing that back to staff. So there's been multiple trainings around growth mindset, how we get our kids to believe that they can learn at high levels, to take action, to take a leap, and then see themselves producing. And ultimately what that ends up becoming is really a self fulfilling prophecy of, hey, I can learn, I can do this at a high level. But it starts with the teacher's belief in kids. So it's really trying to get mindset to translate into action. I can say being in a lot of classrooms, especially over the past month, I see that happening in our classrooms, especially in the math space. So again, just giving you a, a, a quick overview of our, some of our goals and strategy areas this, this year and how they kind of tie. And certainly these are areas that you'll see on your dashboard as well. Take any questions or feedback, no?
Questions for Dr. Slagi?
I do. With the school connectedness piece, I think especially at the middle school and high school levels, could you talk about what happens after kids take that survey and they put an adult's name down? What happens then to that piece of information? Is it just check they have someone or does that piece go to the adult saying, this is everybody who put you down? Do you know who these kids are? That kind of thing? Like what happens after that's done?
Yeah, so we haven't made it formal that we, that we then have our teachers' relationship map for students who have identified them already. However, we have asked our schools to share with their, with their staff, who, who has been that identified adult, right? Now, an extra step that some of our schools will take for kids that have said no on that survey is then to have the staff members' relationship map reversed ways for students that have said no. So looking at those students and saying, all right, who knows something about this child? Who has an in with them, whether it be personal, academic, and interests or something along those lines.
So, but the, but the, whoever, like if I'm the student and I put Dr. Slagi down as my trusted adult, you get a list that has my name on it that tells you, I put you down as the trusted adult?
I don't know if it's a list per se. What I can tell you is we've asked our schools to ensure that our staff know that they've been listed as a trusted adult for a particular student. So whether they're doing it in a list form, whether some are attacking it at a whole staff meeting, whether it's ongoing throughout the year.
Okay.
I can certainly bring back more to you on that though.
Okay. And then I just wanted to ask you about, so going back to, it's kind of around the outside care. And you mentioned that, you know, can the students access their education? And I think this is something I've always struggled with, both as a parent and a board member, about where that line is as far as what is the school responsible for in the mental health of a student? And I know I've had many conversations with you about this and, and I just think it's important, and you said it, I think, is that can the student access their education? And that that's where the school responsibility lies? Does this, is this student in enough of a wellness state, you know, well mental state to access their education? And if we feel that they are not and we can't provide those supports for them, that that's when we would go to this outside care and refer them to outside care? Am I understanding that? I guess, you know, I just wanted some explanation for the community about what that responsibility is, because I think there is some confusion sometime about what a school is really responsible for in this space.
Yeah. Chris, go ahead if you want to. Yeah, you know, I think that that's true to a point. I think that there are students that can still access their education, but that are still seeking outside care for whatever reason, right? So I don't want to make that assumption that just because a child's accessing their, their education, that there's still not a need or an underlying need, right?
Right, and that's not what I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, that's not what I meant to say. But I think that there is a point to what a school can provide to a child.
Absolutely.
As far as mental health, care.
Yeah, and I would say that that's a true statement to say, access to education, support in the educational setting. When we talk about access to outside care, we're talking really more about a therapeutic type setting or therapeutic type support, right? And that's not to say that our care providers within our schools, psychologists, social workers, and counselors. workers, and counselors, aren't utilizing therapeutic strategies, but it is a different level of care. It's absolutely true.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments?
I had a question. It looks like there's the assessment of Sabers for elementary and middle school. Is there an assessment, any assessment for high school?
Yeah, for high school right now, what we've used, we're not using Sabers, but what we do have is the BSAD. So that is the screening that all of our students take at the end of getting the Signs of Suicide lesson. So we utilize that in addition with the other pieces, but we're not utilizing a screener for our secondary students at the high school.
And when is that lesson? What grade level in high school?
Ninth, 11th, and 12th.
Oh. And then a few months ago, we talked about the FAS bridge assessment, and there was a social-emotional component in that, is that correct?
Yes, that's Sabers.
Oh, that's Sabers, okay. And that was it?
Thanks.
Anybody else? Mr. Long?
I want to make sure I understand this pyramid. So is 80% is the goal, and we're at 90 and 93? Is this pyramid, the low risk, some risk, and high risk?
I don't know if 80% is the goal per se, but...
But I said another way, does the, in the elementary, does the 90% go in the 80% box in the pyramid?
Yes, yes, it does.
It's the same information.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I understand that right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
I have a question on the pyramid as well. So those who fall in yellow or red, identified as some or high risk, you said intervention will be, there will be some form of intervention, or?
I put this, so I do apologize, I want to be confusing with this. I put this up here to say typically within a school system, you can expect to have to provide some sort of support or intervention to 15 to 20% of your students.
So my question is, those at the elementary level who fall in the 9% or the 1%, are we providing intervention?
They may need some support. I think we would look at this in combination with academic data, potentially if there's other information here. So this is just one data point from Sabers. So it may be support that's happening in school, but again, this being social academic behavioral data overview, we might have high-risk students that may need, they're outside of school as well, may need intervention at school. What I will tell you, just going through the Sabers data, the majority of our students that fell in the some risk or high risk category were getting intervention or support and/or had an individual education plan.
Okay, so that leads to my, or answers part of my question. If any intervention was in place, parents would be consenting to that?
Correct.
Okay. And then kind of along with that, the ACT, acknowledge, care, and tell. If a student went to their counselor and said, I'm worried about my friend Joey, and the counselor would probably talk to Joey or something, would they also always call the parent that your son's name came up, a friend was concerned, or?
And so if they said, if a friend came to a counselor and said that I'm concerned that there may be risk of harm to self may be present here to a counselor, it would be appropriate for the counselor to contact that parent if they'd spoken to the child about a risk of harm potentially being present, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Paulson?
Yeah, so as you said in, shown at the opening, this has been a long time discussion, something that I've been pretty passionate about from the very beginning of this. Can you go to the layered data and assessment chart? So that, it seems to me that one of the most important things we do is screening our students. I mean, we can't help students unless we know there's an issue or a potential issue. Is it the BSAD screening that we issue to students to kind of self-administer? Is it? So is that required of students to take?
It is, however, there's an opt-out option.
Yeah, so that's what I was going to say. We have, like, active groups and active people encouraging parents to opt out of these surveys that are all about helping students and giving them the best environment to learn. Do we see a certain percentage of students that are opting out of these? And how might that get in the way of what we're trying to do to benefit kids on the SCL?
Yeah, specifically to the BSAD, what I can tell you is, you know, one of the reasons that that's designed at the end is for students that may be internalizing. And so what I can tell you at least on one side of it, one, yeah, we certainly do have, we do have kids that opt out. Not a large amount, but we do. We have families that choose to opt out. But what I will tell you is that through the Signs of Suicide program and through the BSAD, we have identified students that are, that were not on our radar, that were not on parents' radar, and we've been able to give them the support that they need. And so our teams, when that happens, always say, this program needs a lot of work, but, you know, we were able to give the support that we needed. And so a lot of times, that's, the BSAD and/or sometimes Sabers as well can be, you can seek if there's internalizing. So that is the design for them, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'll just go on record that it's frustrating that people are advocating other parents to opt out of something that's so critical.
Yeah.
But it is the parent's choice? I mean, we can't take away a parent's choice of, if for some reason they have, you know, maybe they're seeking their own care, they just want to opt their child out, eh?
And I can say for the Signs of Suicide program, we have had some parents that have come in and said, hey, I want to see the problem, I want to see the videos, I want to see that. And our emotional wellness coordinators have worked with families to see, and actually, you know, they've said, okay, I'm good, and some of the feedback I've heard too, so.
I would say that, I agree with you. A parent choosing to opt out is different than a group actively campaigning to encourage people to opt out. That's what I don't like.
That's fair.
Anything else?
I just have one quick question. Why not 10th grade? We do it in 9th, 11th, and 12th.
Yep, 10th grade is, in the health program, is where our suicide prevention programming lies. So certainly, we have asked our emotional wellness coordinators to work with our health folks to make sure we're using the same language, all those different pieces. But that's why we're not doing the formal program there. We do, we do do it at 8th grade as well, though, too. So when we even looked at our assessment programming, right, you have Sabers 4th through 7th, and then you have the BSAD going 8th through 12th, minus 10th, because that's where our health program.
So we're still touching at 10th grade?
Yes.
Yeah, and through the, through the health program.
Dr. Slaggy, is the GPS program, it's, we're currently using that this school year? Are we finding that it's, is it being well utilized or parents?
Yeah, yeah, we just finished our final training on November 7th of our secondary folks that are elementary before that and high school, sorry, just with our middle school. And early feedback has been very positive. And actually, to that note, there's a light version that's offered for families who want anonymity in searching. So maybe it's not directed by our student services, but families that are in need of it. We've had, the director from GPS told us that 70 families have already accessed that and booked appointments through it. So it's a separate piece that is on our website, and actually, we have it going out in principals' newsletters here before the break, how families can access it as well. It doesn't have all the search options that we have, but it should get them where they need to be. And so we already see families getting good use of it. And at the end of the year, we'll also provide you with some information on how well utilized it was as well.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Dr. Slaggy. Last oral report, updated library learning center selection and reconsideration administrative procedures. I see Mrs. Murphy heading up.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to walk you through the updates made to our administrative procedures that go with Board Policy 6230. In your green folders, there are two materials that I'm going to be referencing. There is the administrative procedure document, and then there is a flow chart. I'm going to start with the administrative procedure for the selection of library materials. And I do want to say that a team of building-level administrators, which would be principals, assistant principals, along with LLC directors collaboratively worked on this administrative procedure. We already had an administrative procedure for this, but we recognized that we needed to make updates. It was already on the docket of things that we wanted to update. And so we collaboratively worked on this at the end of last school year and throughout the beginning of this school year until this point. And so when you look at that administrative procedure, there are six sections to it. The objectives for the selection of materials, responsibility for the selection of materials, criteria, sources to review, and then the process to select materials and the weeding of library materials. Every portion of this administrative procedure was reviewed, and edits were made and updates were made. The major portion that has changes is the portion of process to select materials. And that's where that flow chart is a companion document for you to understand in a high-level way what those changes were. And so our group really had some objectives that we were using in going into the process of adjusting that, the steps that we take. And so our group wanted to make sure, make what had been an informal process in our buildings, we wanted to formalize that process and make it consistent across all of the buildings. We wanted to broaden the number of individuals involved in the selection beyond just one LLC director and one principal at each building. We wanted to create a space where multiple people were discussing books that needed further review. We know the power of conversation that allows our team to do their best work. And we also wanted to make sure that both our LLC team that always have utilized the FALIT tidal wave system, but we also wanted to make sure our principals also were familiar with the FALIT tidal wave system and were using it to its fullest potential. So those were really our goals in framing out this process. So the process used to be, it was one LLC director selecting books at their building, and it would move to a principal for approval. This is how the process that we have put together looks now. It will start exactly the same way. Where the LLC director will prepare a recommended list of books that they would like to bring into the school library. This is where it changes, though. That LLC group will come together as a team by level. So for example, at middle school, it will be the four LLC directors. They will come together and they will have a discussion about the books that they are recommending. And that discussion will always include two sets of books. Books that fall outside of a grade level range. And what I mean by that is a publisher makes a recommendation for the grade level range. So for example, a book like Harry Potter, that is a book that's recommended for grades four through eight. Well, at an elementary level then, because that's really falling outside of the grade level range, they would be discussing that book. So that's like bucket one of the types of books that would always be discussed. The other types of books that always would be discussed are those that have what's called a mature content tag. This is new from the FALIT system. And so all books have tags. Most books have minimally two or more. Going back to my example of Harry Potter, that's a book that has the tags wizards, magic, fantasy, adventure. FALIT has added this tag called mature content. So our LLC team would also be discussing any books that had that mature content tag. After that discussion, they would finalize their list of recommendations, and they would bring that to their building principal. They would sit down with the building principal, have a conversation about the books recommended. And this is where the decision can go one of two ways. Either the books, all books are approved, or principal and LLC director may make the decision that there's some books that they want to just have discussed further by a district-level committee. That district-level committee would meet two to four times a year, discuss the books, then end up on a list to have further discussion. And that district-level committee would make the recommendation whether those books would be selected for the LLC collection or not. There is another update to our administrative procedures, and that is for the reconsideration of materials. And this follows a 10-step process. It starts with, if there is an individual that has a complaint about any materials in the LLC, that would start with a building administrator and an LLC director meeting with the individual. If that complaint wasn't resolved through the conference, the individual would be offered a copy of the request for reconsideration of materials. Once that was filed, then it would, we would form what's called a materials evaluation committee. That team would come together, make a recommendation to the superintendent, and then the superintendent would make a determination whether those materials would remain in the collection or be removed from the collection. And the last step in the process is the complainant would have an opportunity to appeal the superintendent's decision to the Board of Education. So both of these are administrative procedures that do sit behind a board policy. I'm certainly happy to take any questions.
Anybody have questions or comments for Mrs. Murphy? Mrs. Colvis?
I have a few. And the team that prepared this, you mentioned that there were administrators and LLC directors. How many LLC directors were on the team?
There were four. There were at least one from every level. So there was actually two at the elementary level. There was one from middle school and one from high school.
And what's been the feedback from the LLC directors?
The LLC directors and the administrators did come together. They worked on this completely jointly. Every part of this was developed in collaboration.
I appreciate the collaborative process. There's a lot of newness in here, just in terms of the steps and then with the FALIT. I would also suggest, if it's possible, maybe in a year or two, to report back on how it's going to make sure that the process is working as intended.
The team already did bring that as something they want to do, so, thank you.
Anybody else?
I just have two. Would a book, like, would a book that's deemed for young adults be flagged for, at the high school level?
There are lots of categories, so we have many books that do fall into, like, young adult. It would be the flag of the mature content tag.
Okay, thank you. And then I, I think I've expressed already that I would prefer that the book challenge came back to the board to make the decision. Anyone want to join me in that? However, I do appreciate that number 10 was added. Will a complainant, or a challenger, I should say, receive a copy of this whole document, including, you know, the 10 steps outlined? So that they know that they have the option to appeal the decision?
Yeah, you certainly can, I will tell you, and both the challenges. We had this past year, we shared the materials that were in place at the time. I wouldn't anticipate we would do anything different.
First of all, thank you to you and the team for taking the time to do this. I also appreciate the collaborative effort of everyone in there who is a part of the team. I just think it's really important to, I actually, well, I should say, I also spoke to one of our school librarians for about an hour about this. I wanted to get their input. And I just want to, I think it's really important, and the wording is pretty the same, actually, a little bit stronger in the second section of responsibility for the selection of library materials, that I like that it's very expressly stated that the responsibility for coordinating the selection of library materials and making the recommendation for purchase rests with the LLC director. I think it's just really important to recognize that our LLC directors are experts in their fields, and this is what they do, this is what they dedicate their careers to. And I'm glad that we are reiterating that in this policy. I was a little bit concerned about the mature content tag, and, because that can mean different things to a lot of different people. And so I actually reached out to FALIT tidal wave and tried to get some more information on that, because I was, there were no press releases or anything about this being a new tag and how that would work. And so I just wanted to read part of the response that I got back from FALIT tidal wave, that I thought was the relevant part. "Over the past several years, our team of licensed teachers and certified librarians have applied FALIT tags to a wealth of content, aligning titles to genres, subjects, and topics." topics, literary themes, text, text structures, and more. For many titles, there are also third-party reviews from independent review sources such as Kirkus, SLJ, and Booklist. Our team applies a mature content tag when it has been deemed, I'm sorry, when it has been determined by multiple review sources that the book is geared for more mature audiences." So I just wanted to, you know, let, you know, that I did try to reach out to them to get more information, and that was the gist of what they told me about that tag. And also, it was very enlightening speaking to the librarian for as long as I did and how that process works and how thoughtful they are in choosing their books. You know, she said for, you know, every hundred reviews that she, every hundred books she looks into that she might, she usually only orders maybe about 25 of them, about a quarter of them. Like, that's how rigorous this process is and how discerning they are in their selection of their process and, and how they regularly go through their correct collections and remove books or add books as necessary based on a lot of different criteria. And that, and the library, she also explained that with the mature content, that it's usually included in the review of the book as far as what it is. Is there a direct reference or description? Is it just a mention? Is it a flashback, et cetera? So that it's usually pretty well, within these various reviews is pretty well documented what that means. So they, they have a good description of what they're, what this book will maintain. I, I guess I just want to make sure too that the meetings, that, you know, there's a lot more meetings now of people coming together to discuss the books, that they're conducted in a way that book orders don't get held up and, you know, as books are released and kids are excited about books, that, okay, well, now we gotta wait three months because that's the next meeting when they might lose some interest there. I, and I just wanted to confirm that the process is staying the same as far as if a parent wants to not have their child able to check out a certain book, that they, it's an opt-out policy, that the parent contacts the library and they can request, you know, whatever criteria they...
Yeah, there's no change to that, that process that we put in place and communicated at the beginning of the year. Families have the opportunity to name specific titles that they would like be accounted for on their child's account.
Okay. And then along with that too, that, that I don't also want that, the burden on the librarians that if a parent chooses to not have their child have a book, which is obviously perfectly fine, that the parent needs to have that discussion with their child and that, because if a child goes up to check out a book and their librarian said, you know, I'm sorry, you can't check out that book, and the child's unaware of that, that child may become very upset. And then that's, you know, then that's a situation in a school that there wasn't a discussion at home, and that, that puts the librarian in a difficult situation there that explaining, they don't, they're not sure why, they're just told by the parent that this book is not to be checked out. So, you know, I, just so we have something, a process there for what, if that situation should occur. I actually really appreciate the, the update to the procedure for reconsideration of materials. I think as Dr. Schuler explained at the, at the CAC meeting, this brings this consideration policy in line with all of our other consideration policies, that this very much falls under the purview of the administration and the, again, the experts in education that we have in our buildings to, to review that process, and I fully agree with that. I also just wanted to share quickly a, a few, couple of statistics that I found from a survey done by the, on behalf of the American Libraries Library Association in March of 2022. This is on the American Library Association's website. And I just wanted to share a couple of, of these statistics that I thought were important that came out of this survey that was 1,000 voters and 472 parents of children in public school. And the sample is demographically and geographically representative US voters and parents. That 74% have quite a lot or a great deal of confidence in public libraries in their local school district to make good decisions about what books to include in their collections. And I think more importantly was the statistic of fully, 83% of voters and 86% of parents say that they are more likely to trust librarians when they hear that librarians are trained to not impose their own thoughts and opinions on which ideas are right, but to make knowledge and ideas available so that people have the freedom to choose what to read. And this was a really interesting survey because they broke it down, and I just, I don't like bringing anything political to this table, but they break it down by political parties and the, the percentages are pretty much the same across all political parties, which I thought was very interesting to see too, that there's a very, very high opinion. 90% of parents and, I'm sorry, 90% of voters and 92% of parents have a favorable opinion of librarians who work in local public libraries and school libraries, including 66% of voters and 65% of parents who are very favorable toward librarians. So I just think that, I just thought that was really important to read into the record here for, for context that, you know, I, I agree with, with Julie that, you know, that as long as this policy can stay open to review and how it's working and that our libraries are, our librarians are still having the expertise to fill their, their shelves with the books that they feel is appropriate for their particular building and their students. And that, I do think a lot of the parents in our district understand what librarians do and, and have that trust in our, in our librarians as we look at this process and, and update it a bit, so. But I do appreciate all the work. Thank you.
Mr. Long?
So the administrative procedure, I think, is, is good. Really very little different in this than what we were, was in place, just kind of a little more thorough documentation.
No, it's quite a bit different. I mean, everything that Mrs. Murphy went through on that flow chart is...
Yeah, so, well, and I was gonna get to the flow chart next, but the wording here, it's documenting that, except for the review.
No, that every section of this procedure has been updated.
Okay.
The most significant change, though, is in the process.
Yep. So one question about that, on this by-level review, the by-level LLC directors will review selections that hit these parameters outside of grade level or, or mature. That's gonna be some percentage of the books, probably a small percentage?
Actually...
Or is it a large percentage?
It could, it could be. Here's a great example, because our, our schools have already been trying this out, especially our LLC directors that are a part of the development. A lot of the nonfiction books actually fall outside of a grade level range because of the informational content. But, you know, that's, but the thought process there is not all of those need to move on to a district level committee.
Yep. Okay. So, so if a book does not hit any of those parameters, does the principal or building administrator still review, approve the list?
Building principal always approves and reviews the entire list.
Right, because there's some books, right, the way you go, go down the flow chart, there's some books that, kind of stops there in the flow chart, but it really goes there. Okay, well, and I, I, I mean, I like the change because it's gonna force a little more discussion, and, you know, I think that's, that it's, they're good changes, so thank you.
Anybody else?
I think, Dave, I think you were saying that, like, the criteria and the sources of review are pretty much similar to the old process, right? But the selection, right? Okay.
So this is, just clarifying points, this was an existing administrative procedure that we updated. And this is regarding board policy 6.230, so this is the administrative policy used to implement that. And then by reference, probably more important is the reference in, in 6.230, the reference to 6.210, which is instructional materials. So those two things work hand in hand, that's what the board does. And so this, I'm just clarifying, this, this policy's an administrative procedure that directs you how to implement these policies, right? Okay.
Anybody else before I go?
So I just had a question in terms of, we're talking, you know, mature content, the committee meeting. The committee is going to be still two representatives from elementary, one middle school, one high school, or is it...
The committee? The committee would meet by level, so if the books were elementary books that needed to be discussed, there would be representations of LLC directors and elementary principals. Same would apply at middle school, same would apply for high school.
So would we ever consider bringing into that committee, if it's mature content, maybe it's a social worker, psychologist, other professionals to help with giving expertise in an area that maybe...
I, I think the conversations with individuals that have expertise about the subject matter of books is always valued, and I think that first step would probably be a building principal working with individuals that have that expertise first. And if that information can be shared at that committee level easily, we would do that. If we felt like that an individual with that expertise would be valuable to that committee, we would bring them in.
So the other thing too is, is, you know, I know, I 100% agree with board members too that have said, you know, these are trained professionals. And, and, you know, I, I believe that that's, that's, that's what their job is. And so I, I want to be sure that maybe if something has been said, not quite sure right now, but let's just say a year from now, we've, they found, that book's been very successful for whatever reason in other areas, we have the ability to come back and look at that again. It's not like completely removed from a list and it's being, you know, I, I just want that, that to be an option as well, that there could be some possible reconsideration, you know, from that as well, evidence that comes back from the librarians that are saying, you know what, I've heard from former, from other districts and colleagues that, that are doing that. And then my other question is, is I know it says we'll meet two to four times a year. We know what, like, purchasing looks like? Is it a continual basis throughout the year? I know there's book fairs that happen, there's, you know, where there's like an influx all of a sudden of, of new books. I just want, as we said before, like, not to be holding back an opportunity, you know, for something because we're only gonna do this maybe twice.
Yeah. Through working with the LLC directors through this process, I learned that the purchasing is a little bit different.
Everywhere.
Yeah, the timeline of it. They all kind of did their work on different timelines, but all completed by the deadline that needs to take place for, that's set by the business office. So that time period is, can be anywhere from the very beginning of the school year until, like, the end of February. And so the team collectively came up with that idea of two to four times. We wrestled with what the right number is, we left a range, and I think that's the piece that, to the point earlier, we might have to come back and revisit if that's the appropriate number of times to meet or if that needs to be adjusted.
And I think, I think another positive to kind of look at this, this process is, you know, as, as a classroom teacher, you have other colleagues that are, you know, you're collaborating with. With an LLC director, sometimes they're the only person for that building, that by having this now flow chart and opportunity, it's, it's, it's giving them the support that they need if they are gonna be challenged by something that other people have talked about it, it's not just one person who's feeling kind of that lone, you know, criticism or whatever that's kind of coming at them, that then now there is a little bit of a, hey, this was a collective decision that was, that was made. And I think that that is, that's helpful as well for, for LLC directors. So I thank you for the, I know that we felt like this was a, you know, hadn't been looked at in a while and, and needed to be looked at. There's one other piece that I thought about, just thought about. We've talked about new genre coming in to, you know, and, and identifying and that is a, kind of that process. I'm gonna, and I'll use graphic novel as the, as the thing. It's, it's really become a new genre that didn't exist a whole lot 10 years ago. You know, help within that as well, like, is, do we have to dig in deeper sometimes with some of those newer things?
Yeah, and that actually speaks to, when you look at the criteria section, the second bullet point was actually something that was reworked. And it says right there, consideration of both content and illustrations, because we recognize opening the book and reviewing those components is important.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to follow up?
Thank you. Okay. There are no discussion items. Written reports were attached to the agenda, the monthly financial report, FOIA report, board communication log, citizens advisory committee. There were no board committee meetings this last month, so we don't have board committee reports. Other reports from board members, does anybody have anything they would like to talk about?
I'll start.
Okay.
I didn't go to the conference. I went to the conference, but for work, so I didn't, I didn't go on behalf of the districts. I don't have any reports from sessions. You know, the comment I'd like to make is, kind of in regard to all the open, or the public comment that we received tonight, I mean, I just want the community to know, the teachers to know, students to know that we've received overwhelming support for our staff through email, not only from within our community, outside our community, even out of state there was one. So I just feel that heartwarming to see that support, and I agree with that. Just want to go on record.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Anybody else have something they'd like to share?
I do.
Okay.
Do you want me to go through anything about the delegate assembly, or no?
Not unless there was anything that was...
Uh, no, everything went according to plan, just say that. Or according to what we discussed, I should say. I, there are a couple of things, I had two visits, school visits. Last week at Bauer and Hawthorne, and both were really great. At Bauer, I visited a fifth grade classroom where they were voting on the president and vice president of their class, so we had a good discussion about some civics and how school board works, and, and so that was really great. And the, that fifth grade teacher was actually piloting the, is it ARC?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to, I meant to check that, and I forgot. The ARC ELA program, and, and he was really excited about it. So, yeah, so I just thought, I would say that. And then it was really interesting, then we went into a fourth grade class, and they were doing their, starting their math unit, and, and Mrs. Moore asked them what, how it's going and what they like about it. And it was so interesting to see how excited they were about this new program. They liked that it was on paper over a computer, which I thought was really, really interesting. And they liked that they prefer working in groups and with their peers, and that they like to hear the different ways of solving a problem if they can't figure it out. And they also liked that the program itself was more challenging than what they've had in the past. So it was really great, it was really great for Mrs. Moore too. So it was, I know that it's been, and I fully acknowledge it's been a lot of work for our teachers, but the students are really benefiting from it. And then when I went to Hawthorne, I received, we received very similar feedback from the fifth grade class there, and that they, again, it was just very, very similar to what they had said at Bauer. And I got to see how they worked through a problem as a group, and not only learning math, obviously, but how, what was really interesting was how to speak respectfully to each other and ask thoughtful questions when someone incorrectly answered a problem wrong. And I just thought that was such a great lesson that the student, you know, the teacher gave them prompt, but the students were very thoughtful in how, when the student put it up on the board and it wasn't quite right, the students were very thoughtful in asking that student, why did you do it this way? Or how, you know... Or how, you know, whatever. So that was really great to see. And I liked the concept about how they are learning to compute their problems. And I won't get into the specifics, but they were working on multiplying fractions. And when it, when they worked it out on the board, Mrs. Zimmerman, she whispered in my ear, she's like, do you get it? And I'm like, I have to admit, I was not smarter than a fifth grader at that moment in time. But I did, later on at dinner, I was, I was doing it with my boys. I'm like, this is what the problem was, and I mapped it out, and then I got it. When I was explaining it to my kids, then I got it. So I just wanted to tell Mrs. Zimmerman, I get it now. So I'm really proud of that. So, and I also attended the Wheaton Warrenville South Holiday Pops concert over the weekend, and that was a really great concert. And thank you to Ms. Drake and all the parents that put that on. It was a really great event, and that's their big fundraiser, and they raised a lot of money with it. And it was just great to see the students performing and how well everything came together there. So that was really nice to see. All right. Here we go. So I would like to comment on the Edison Middle School's inclusion of a rainbow tree in a holiday tree display. For the sake of transparency, Edison is my home school, and my kids were there for five years, with last year, last school year being our last year there. I want to state unequivocally, I stand firmly with Mrs. Bednar and the staff at Edison regarding their inclusion of a tree that represents our students and staff in the LGBTQ+ community. I also want to provide context around why this issue runs so deep for me. I was raised Jewish and still identify as Jewish, even though I am not practicing. I grew up in a small town where we pretty much were the only Jewish family. At some point when I was very young, I heard stories of the Holocaust. What I didn't understand was that it was over. While I never thought I would be killed, I did very much believe that people would hate me if I told them I was Jewish. So all throughout elementary school, I never told anyone. And then came the fifth-grade Christmas program at our elementary school. Five minutes before we were to go onto the risers, an adult came into the classroom and casually announced that we would be singing Silent Night at the end of the concert. As a ten-year-old, it was terrifying. It was clear that this was no big deal for all of the other students, and that I was the only one who didn't know the words to the song. My secret would be known. I tell you all of this because I fully understand what it feels like to have to hide a part of yourself from the world at a young age, because you think everyone will hate you, and that you won't be accepted for who you are. I fully understand what it feels like to see everyone around you celebrating something, whether it be Christmas or any other holiday, and you don't fit the quote-unquote standard. As a board member, as a parent, as a community member, I will not tolerate any words or actions that result in any student having to feel they have to hide themselves within the walls of our schools. This is the beauty of a public school. Everyone is welcome, and you get to learn about lives that don't look like yours. Mrs. Bednar did not deserve the hate-filled rhetoric that she has received over the past few weeks. The hate I've seen over this is so blatantly about homophobia and nothing to do with Christmas and trees. What's also so baffling is that the people who are propagating this hate-filled rhetoric are the same people who wrote to us and spoke to us during COVID about the mental health of our students, and how grave the situation was for the mental health of our students. This simple act of including a rainbow tree is also about mental health. According to the Trevor Project, LGBTQ youth who live in a community that is accepting of LGBTQ people reported significantly lower rates of attempting suicide compared to those who do not. Just today in Washington, DC, the House Oversight Committee held a hearing on violence and threats against LGBTQ people as the US sees a rise in anti-LGBTQ+ legislation and an increase in inflammatory rhetoric and hate crimes against LGBTQ+ people. This is a real thing. In this seasonal time of celebrating joy, kindness, and miracles, we can come together to recognize that our differences are what makes us whole. They are what makes us a community, and celebrating those differences can bring us closer together as opposed to driving us apart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Booton. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add?
Can I just say, Mrs. Booton, thank you for sharing that. I appreciate it very much. And I think I'll just start off saying, in our home, we have a pride flag. I'm proud of that. Like, that's part of our family, and we have that, we display that. I think there's nothing wrong with that. But reading some of the emails and hearing some of everything that's gone on this week, I think on the flip side, I think it's okay for someone to say that they don't want to celebrate sex in middle school. And if that's what someone sees, a celebration of sexuality, I think it's okay for a parent to express that without being labeled homophobic or a bigot, including by staff members. I don't know what the answer is to bring everyone together. But the name-calling, it's just not helpful. I don't, it's frustrating, because I care about every single student in this district, and every single student should feel valued and appreciated and celebrated. But I understand parents not wanting sexuality as part of middle school. I don't know what the right answer is, but thank you.
I guess I don't see it as sexuality. I see it as somebody being accepted for who they are. And so-
There's a difference of opinion.
Right.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to share?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. I had the opportunity to go to Monroe on Veterans Day, so sat and had breakfast with a couple veterans and their families, nephews or children that had invited them for the celebration. So I was really happy to go there, because my kids went there, and I always heard about how special that program was, and so I finally had that opportunity. So it was really great to connect with a couple veterans and hear their stories and see them celebrated by the Monroe community. I had my meeting with my teacher group since our last meeting, so it's always good to get that perspective and input. And last participation thing is, my wife and I did get to go to the, pack the gym for Special Olympics basketball game at Hubble back a couple weeks ago. And it was really just a, it was just so fun to see these kids playing basketball with different levels of needs and the excitement when a kid makes a basket, and just the way they work together, and just all the positivity about it, and a lot of support from kids that aren't part of that community that were there. And then just in terms of a quick report out on the conference, the thing that struck me the most was the keynote authored by the name of Amanda Ripley, and she talked about high conflict. And, you know, the thing that really struck me, and it's evident in some of what we're just talking about now and what we hear at the podium, is this concept of everything's binary, so you're either here or there. And we, as a, as a country, as a community, we don't seem to be able to kind of meet in the middle or coexist, and we get all this vitriol, and it's just, it's just really interesting phenomenon and development that just leaves us so far apart, and how do we move forward and heal on that? So that was, that made the biggest impact on me that whole weekend.
Did she have an answer?
You know what?
Suggestion?
I don't remember an answer. I will tell you, I don't usually buy books based on stuff like that. I bought the book, but between work and school board, it's hard to read. So I'm hoping to make my way through the book and see what it tells me. So I don't, I sat with Susan and Julie, I don't remember her, she had some, she had some-
She talks a lot about reframing, right? So I think what sits at the heart of that conflict is when we see things as us versus them, and so we tag a person's opinion and assume you must be different than me, right? Like, rather than trying to reframe the conversation to say it's actually me and you. So Julie and I could have a difference of opinion on something and recognize that we can actually find common ground around, and we may never see something exactly the same, but I've not labeled Julie in, like, sort of totality, just based on an opinion she's expressed. And so I think that's part of what she talks a lot about, is just trying to reframe the conversation to actually bring people together, one stop labeling, right, based on opinions that are offered, and bring people together around dialogue, to actually focus on commonalities, even amid differences we might have.
That's good.
I'll go. So to start off with the benign, it seems like forever ago, but on Veterans Day, which was since our last meeting, I had a chance to go to two of my three adopted schools of Lowell and Madison and see their Veterans Day presentations, met Dr. Schuler at one of them. And it was just really interesting to see all the different ways the schools sort of created their own programs, and really fun to see the kids celebrating. At the conference, my biggest takeaway is, I'm going to cheat here and not talk about one takeaway from one session, but really all of them, is that I really tried to go to a variety of sessions, and what struck me is the number of different skill sets that we bring here to the table. So there was sessions that I went to on finance, on equity, governance, crisis management, legal issues, social emotional learning, incorporating the PTA, inherent involvement, community engagement. And so, and there were, looking at the agenda, you know, three times more sessions that I wanted to attend as well. So it was just really a good reminder of all of the different skill sets we put here. To the point of, you know, the book, that was similar to a League of Women Voters session that I attended not too long ago, and it was about really seeing the humanity in people. And through the emails this week and the public comment, like, that's what struck me the most, is I just, I kept on thinking of what it was like to be that fifth grader, that fifth grader that feels different. And I just hope people lead with empathy and lead with understanding that struggling child. And I think there are things like this that can, I don't see this as sex symbols, it's not how we talk about it in our family, but just an understanding at that age level of relationships and how you relate to other people, what different families look like, what one day your family might look like, and if you feel like you don't fit into a box that is typical in society, knowing that there are people there that will accept you, I feel like, is very meaningful. I just, I was just very heartbroken thinking about the kids that must feel that way. And so I would just encourage, lead with empathy.
Thank you. Okay. Topics for future discussion, we have the fiscal year 2022 audit.
Actually, Chris, can I, I just want to follow up on something, because before Julie spoke, I was, I was planning to say something more about Dave and what Dr. Schuler shared about trying to bring, you said it much more eloquently than I'm saying it now. That one thing that does concern me is that I have heard in passing amongst students very unkind things, and I don't think those things should be tolerated, and it concerns me that they still occur. So I see the need for there to be acceptance and truly, you know, acceptance for everyone. And you did a great job, Julia, of explaining, like, lead with empathy, but it almost made me feel like, well, I'm not leading with empathy by just recognizing someone else has a different point of view than I might, or than we might, or anyone might. So I, I feel like instantly I was like, oh, again, you know, but that's not why, I mean, how do we, if we, if I'm triggered by some, I, like, it's just a tough, I, I think we can't leave here saying, well, anyone who has any question or opposition to that, if they don't come this way, then it's a tough thing.
And to be very clear, my comment was not directed to you.
No, I know.
It was just in how we think about these issues and how we talk about these issues. I hope as a society, we can do a little more listening and understanding than talking. So that's my point in leading with empathy of how we frame those discussions.
Thank you.
Topics for future discussion, the fiscal year 2022 audit, five-year financial projections, summer 2023 playground recommendations. Are there any other topics for future discussion board members would like to see?
And I actually spoke with Chris about this already. And Chris asked that to be very specific, so I will.
Please be specific.
I think that I would like to see a review of the wording on number five of Policy Eight.
So point number five of eight point eight-
Point number five is specifically the definition of viewpoint neutral. Because ultimately, we need to go back to policy, and if policy's not clear, I think we should look at that, because I think we have had differing thoughts about what that means. Second thing to ask for, and this, I don't know, needs to be necessarily at a future board meeting, but maybe if we could just be provided an update on the whole, all of the dual credit options that we currently have, and what the relationship that we have with Indiana University and Loyola University looks like, just I feel like I miss that. I'm unclear about that. So it doesn't necessarily have to be at a board meeting, but I'd love to receive some of that information.
Can you explain? I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
So an update on where our dual credit offerings are right now.
Okay.
They're different between both schools. Wheaton Warrenville South and Wheaton North have different offerings-
Okay.
Provided, and the credit is offered through three different colleges. So I just feel like I, we'd like some clarity on what that looks like and what, what we are financially, what the difference might be between the three universities, college universities, and just how that works for students. Thank you.
Anything else? Next regular board meeting is January 11th, 2023, at Franklin. Announcements, January 25th, 2023, committee of the whole at School Service Center. There being no further action to come before the board an open session, I ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed, meeting is adjourned.